Now, my microphone is on, so everybody at home can hear me when I say welcome. First order of business is boards and committees, information. Are there any committees that would like to report out before we move on to the department heads? No? Stacy, come on up.
We have our first budget committee for the session to organize the budget committee on Wednesday.
This coming Wednesday?
This coming Wednesday at 6:30 in this room. We'll be reorganizing the budget committee and assigning liaisons and then setting the schedule for budget committee for the rest of the year.
Very good, thank you. This coming Wednesday. Yeah, that's the 27th, I believe.
And Adam will be here to record. He wanted to make sure he had a permission.
Yep. Thank you, Stacy. Any other committee reports at this time? Okay, we'll start with department heads. And Chief Pellerin, I'm gonna ask you to... I'll go that side. Stay there, because next time I'll go next to Susan. How's that sound?
First off, welcome back. I know I said it at the last meeting, but welcome back to those that were reappointed and new members as well. I would like to thank Tammy, Ellen, and the board for the recount that I requested last Friday, Thursday, Friday. It did not change the outcome, but it was a good process, and I appreciate all the help. Speaking of that, Article 4, that was Article 30, to add $75,000 to the capital reserve fund. I believe it currently has about $550,000 to $600,000 in that fund now. Our plan is to go before the voters in March of next year to request a new tanker. The tanker we currently run is 2001, so next year it'll be 24 years old. We've had some costly repairs with suspension, exhaust, electrical system, and air systems of the truck the past few years. I anticipate that those are going to become more frequent and more expensive. So, this is kind of a... Usually, in the past, our replacement schedule for trucks has been 20 years. We can extend that out, as we have with this truck and a few other trucks. But at some point, it becomes counterproductive to keep putting money at the problem. Trucks now are, even for that truck, back in... Well, our newest engine, we paid $450,000 for in 2017. To replace that today would be close to $1 million. So, trucks are not getting any cheaper. Ambulances are not getting any cheaper. Same as, you know, your regular everyday driver has gone from $50,000 to $100,000. Trucks just go even more, because a lot of them are custom or... So, I just want to prepare you guys for that. So, obviously, I'm assuming a lot of you know that the planning board has several projects coming before them currently and in the near future. So, between Liberty Commons, the golf course, and Chinburg Properties, we're looking at the addition of a couple hundred residents. So, I just want to kind of drop it in your ear that right now, we have six full-timers, full-time firefighter EMTs. We still depend several times a week on per diem. So, within the next couple of years, we're going to be... Obviously, part of my job is to see what needs we need before we need them. And staffing is an issue with the addition of several hundred residents. One of those, the golf course being age-restricted, obviously heightens the need even more than, you know, a healthy 30, 40-year-old, when age-restricted is usually 55-plus. Per capita, we have one of the highest age-restricted communities in the state of New Hampshire, because we have about six age-restricted housing developments currently. So, this will be number seven. So, again, just kind of telling you where we're headed. I am going to be doing a lot of research to see what we can find for what that'll impact look like for the community and for my department specifically. But we are looking into grants for personnel additions and all that good stuff, but that may be coming down the pike as well. Lastly, both of our ambulances, we run two ambulances right now. Both of them are nearing 90,000 miles on each. Usually, with a typical everyday driver, that's not a lot, but when it's an ambulance and it is expected to respond to any emergency in any condition and kind of be the life-saving device that we carry everything on. Our oldest ambulance, I believe, is a 2012. So, usually, those would get replaced every 12 years. The problem is now, just like with everything else, if I order an ambulance today, it's going to take two to three years to get here. So, I'm starting to meet with ambulance manufacturers to replace our A2, which is our oldest one. We should have enough money in the ambulance fund so that this will not be a cost burden to the taxpayers at all. Hence why we established that fund years ago. But just wanted to give you a heads-up that probably by the end of this year, and the selectmen are... We just have to have a public meeting. Selectmen's are agents to expend that fund. So, I'll be coming to this board probably by the end of the year, once we do all our research and get the numbers squared away, to see about replacing one of the ambulances.
One of the things that might be helpful is to give us an analysis of when a 55-plus community was opened, what the anticipated usage of the ambulance was, and what the actual is. If you do a couple of years, I think in the long... That in itself is good information to have, and will make the public more aware of the needs for our ambulance service and as it's growing, and the fire department, because you're going to need the staffing to increase the services.
I can tell you, with All-American, now that's a little different than age-restricted housing, but just for easy numbers, the previous chief to me anticipated 70 extra calls per year, and we go to over 300 calls a year. So, pretty much a call a day, we go to All-American.
Okay, thank you.
When you talk about ordering a new tanker, how does that payment work? Do you have to pay upfront? So, just thinking about a warrant article, right? So, how long do we have?
So, we've always purchased the vehicle upfront. Usually, they give you some money off, you know, $20,000, $30,000 off the top if you pay upfront. Another very... Another option, I guess, would be to lease the vehicle, lease-purchase. So, there's a couple of different options that I'm looking in. Another option is to take the current body we have now on the tanker and just put it on a new chassis. So, that will save a ton of money, so we're looking at that as well. We just need to ensure that the current body and pump that we have now will work for all the equipment that we want to put on it, because things are ever-changing with short staffing, with the, you know, additional calls that we get. So, we just need to make sure that if that's the route that we go down... So, to replace that tanker could be $700,000, $800,000. If we were to remount that body and pump, it would probably be looking at like $500,000. So, that's a definite option we're looking at and hoping for. We just need to make sure that that works for us. But yes, there's several different purchasing options.
Okay, thank you.
So, Graham, a similar question with regard to the ambulances. Actually, there are two questions for that.
You only get one.
No. Sorry, two. The... You said there are two... We have two ambulances. They're both at about the same mileage mark. Is one of them in better condition, and that would be targeted for replacement?
We would replace the one that's in lesser condition.
Yep, okay. And is the option to possibly put the body of one onto a new chassis and frame, as with the tanker?
It is. When we bought our last ambulance, I was on the committee, and I was really pushing for four-wheel drive. So, right now, our ambulance is not four-wheel drive. They just have on-spot chains which come into the back tires. So, I don't know if we can take that body and put it on the different chassis. We have a meeting with Ron Moran from PL Custom, who we bought probably the last four ambulances from on April 1st, so that's a good question to ask him.
Good, thanks.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief.
That's all I have.
Any questions, Chief? You did good, thank you.
Spending a little.
Next, Tammy Begio, Town Clerk, Tax Collector.
After that, I'm gonna... I'm really good, because I don't want $1 million. Our election was held. Thank you, Phil, for designing the cattle chute to get people to get to their correct line. Everyone liked it. We had a lot of positive feedback for that. We had 33 people working after the polls closed and worked till I get home just after midnight, and there was no issues. That's just the way it's going to be. So, I'd like to think about changing the hours again. I know we had a little bit of resistance last year when I mentioned it, but... Oh, sorry.
Who is that? Oh, it's me.
No, my phone. So, but we might want to think about it.
Changing them to seven?
Yeah, to eight, to seven, and, you know, just to give us...
Could you do seven to seven?
You could. You could do anything, anything.
But it has to be a warrant article, because the hours were set by warrant, and so we'll have to do it again. The only thing we're going to note, Tam, is to put a warrant article next year.
Thank everyone for participating, who helped count and tally. We have... So, two down, two to go. And the next two ones are not going to be fun. And Graham already mentioned the recount. Taxes, we have $426,000 left to collect. We have sent the list to the title search company for four properties that are in danger of being deeded, and that is on May 30th, so I'll be coming before you. In the past, the... It's normal... It's the same people, and they usually pay just before deeding time. So, hopefully, that won't be an issue. Dogs, we have 790 unregistered dogs. The town clerk's office will be at the rabies clinic on April 6th from 9:00 to noon, so that someone can get a rabies for their dog, and then come over to us and register it at the same time. I would like to remind everyone that if they haven't yet taken their oath, they should come down to see me and swear and take their oath. And April 17th, the town clerk's office will be closed for training. I didn't ask for any money.
Yes, yes, you still have time.
Thank you. Any questions for Tammy? Okay, our next is Pedro Avia, our building inspector and code enforcement officer. Pedro, good morning.
Thank you. Hi, good morning.
Pedro, put the mic down on the table and put the little grill toward you.
Thank you. Amazing. Perfect. Thank you very much. So, welcome to the members of the board, the new ones and existing ones. Congrats. With that, I'm going to start talking. We had a meeting, interdepartmental meeting, last week, Thursday morning. The meeting was really good. A lot of information was shared. Right now, we are going to keep the same process in some areas, as in the view of getting the cloud permitting software installed. So, but everything... There have been many changes going on, going there to procedures. So, new applications, what I'm telling every applicant and resident is that the procedure will be for new applications, new construction. All departments has to sign off prior to me rendering an issuance of a building permit. The reason being is we have several permits that lack sign-off, and several permits are were issued without the proper procedures in place, and the view of all the departments has to be involved in the process. So, to prevent that from keep happening, that I believe that was the fair venue, so that everybody take a note on what's going on. If they have to do with a building permit, they can communicate with me. If they don't, they can also communicate with me, let me know, and then we can issue the building permit once all items have been cleared. Business occupancy, we have instituted at two years renovations on business occupancy. Every business shall recertify every two years. The reason behind it, we have encountered many business occupancy, which have been made modifications and have obstructed life and safety mechanism, putting jeopardy the life of those occupying those businesses. So, we need to make sure that that doesn't keep going forward in the town, because life and safety is one thing that I take with deep respect, and I want to make sure that everybody occupying a business is safe, and everybody that is in contact with that business is also safe. So, for that reason, we have said that from now on, all new business occupancy should recertify every two years, and that will prompt a visit from all the inspectors, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, the road agent, fire department, health officer, and myself, to make sure all life and safety items are in place and they are not being obstructed, that people can use that business safely.
So, what you're saying is that any new business will be recertified every two years?
I believe the practice should be for every business, but I need first for the board to discuss that aspect. Right now, I'm doing it with every new business occupancy permit that I'm receiving.
What about a fee structure for that permit?
That's one thing that I'm going to be also talking with that. Right now, we are just leaving the $100 fee that we have been assessing for those permitings. We haven't made any changes, but it's definitely worth discussing due to the amount of effort and labor that goes into that. The other thing with that is permit fees. New applications, I have been seeing a lot of challenges. They are not in compliance with the current edition of the code, and I've been talking with those applicants and residents on how they can tackle the building code to the extent of these are the sections of the code that you have to be able to show compliance with. Some people are very versatile on figuring out all the half-challenges. And at that point, I recuse myself from giving any other instruction on that, because to a certain degree, that's a very thin line of me actually designing the project for the individual, and I would like to sustain myself from doing that. I don't want to be that a practice that I would like to incur on. So, because of that, I'm also requesting to sit down at a later occasion to review the fee schedule and go over it. I believe one of the things that shall be incorporated is the application fee, a non-refundable application fee taken upfront. That also lead me to say that all fees, I'm not collecting on any fee upfront, because that was giving the applicant the impression that they already attained the permit, because they pay for it. Therefore, work has been started without even getting the permits in place. As an example of that... Well, not an example, but a 28 morning, though, there is a new house that was going to be constructed, but they haven't progressed, because they haven't paid the fee, and they know that. And anything that they do can become a working without permit situation, and a cease and desist letter that will follow through. There are many projects that have been ceased and desisted, the same reason. They have... The practice was that they bring the application and submit the payment immediately. Some of them have been doing more work than what they apply for, rendering those permit null and void. So, another thing is that there is a challenging situation going in town, which at some point, I will need to address with the board, because there is a couple of projects that are deemed way past the scope of the work that was applied for, and that might require for those individuals to demonstrate compliance, and if they don't comply, they might not be able to get a variance in some instances, which will render the structure to be cost to be demolished. Because, I mean, that is... We cannot let things go above and beyond our ordinance, so all the building code. But anyways, we're trying to work with those individuals to see to what extent they can be assisted. The whole goal is to be able to assist those individuals, but that's a problem that they got themselves into, whether there was lack of information, lack of knowledge. Neither of those skews the matter that they are above and beyond the letter of the code or the ordinance, the town ordinances. That's pretty much what we got on those end. Now, with regards to the procedures that were... That are taking place, the reason why we didn't change procedures based on the meeting that we have on Thursday is because we are going to go into cloud permitting, and we already have talked with them. We have a meeting next week to start discussing the institution of cloud permitting software online for all the general public and the contractors in town, so that they can apply online for permitting and complaints and all that. So, very excited on that process, moving forward with that, and very eager to start it and help the community that way.
I have a question. So, for clarification, Pedro, so you're talking about an application fee. So, if somebody submits a permit, they're just going to do an application fee? You're going to review it? You're going to do whatever you need to do? And then, once they have everything, they would pay their permit fee? Or they would... That's how... Okay.
Yes, yes. And it's because, again, I have seen applications that can take me 15 minutes review. It have taken me three days to finalize it, because of the lack of items that are in there and the amount of instructions that I have to give to the general public or the contractor in that manner.
All right. Great.
Pedro, with regard to the implementation of the online permitting, will that include the ability for the applicant to pay the application fee online?
Most definitely. As a matter of fact, talk have been taking place on that manner, and I asked cloud permitting if there was a possibility that when an individual submit the application, there can be some sort of message or flag stating you have successfully submitted your application. In order to move forward with the application review, you should pay X amount, and once the application is approved and properly reviewed, you will be asked to finalize the payment with regards to the cost of the permit fee.
Okay, thank you.
And would that application fee then be applied to the permit fee, or it's separate?
Yes, it's going to be... It's... Well, it's two things, yeah, because the application fee has nothing to do with the permit fee.
Okay.
Yeah, it's two different things, yes.
All right, okay.
Any other questions for Pedro? Yes, Chief?
So, I will say, there's been an ongoing issue for myself, Phil, and the inspectors that once we... Obviously, to get to the change of occupancy, right? So, if it's a business occupancy, we have a lot of business commercial condos in the town of Kingston that... Patriot Park down on 125. If unit 13 sells to somebody, we have no guidance for them unless they come in to inquire about what they do and what they need to do. You know, business can just change hands, and we will never know that they're storing chlorine or has met, you know, or whatever. So, assembly permits, like for any restaurant, church, meeting hall, we have to go in once a year, because that's part of the liquor permit. So, like for a saddle-up, we have to go in once a year, and the liquor commissioner won't give him a liquor permit until he has a valid assembly permit up to date from us. So, that's kind of a catch-all for, you know, businesses that have liquor licenses, but for any other business in the town of Kingston that can just change hands and not have to be inspected, we... Brian and Pedro went down to a newer construction, and we were... They were just signing off the building permit, and there were already new walls going up in one of the units. So, things like that need to be caught on a regular basis. And I think the... Every two years, it's kind of a lot of work, I think, for Pedro and the other inspectors. But I think some sort of annual-by-annual inspection... I've looked it up. Newton, they require each business to send an email once a year, that at least they have it on record that nothing has changed, or, you know, we put up a wall, or whatever it is. So, kudos to Pedro for kind of organizing something that will catch some of the issues moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Pedro? Paula Mahoney, our finance director.
So, I've been working on some new policies that I think we're going to talk about after, and I'll be working on additional ones to put in writing. I just finished with the retirement audit, so I'm just waiting for her breakdown. But we did... I did find out that there are a few things... We hadn't been audited in 10 years by them, so it wasn't one person that was doing it. We just didn't... We were just doing things, like, you know... So, the way we were reporting a few things, I may be needing additional information from all departments. Or I might be having to redo the way timesheets are brought to me, because some of those things were brought up because of the way they were reported. I would have no idea from looking at the way the timesheets are now. It would be on an individual basis timesheet that I would see the information needed. So, I'll be working on that. I think that's really it.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Melissa Menon, our library director.
Good morning. First, I'd like to thank Alternative Sales Corp. That you probably know, they were selling maple syrup to raise money. One of the institutions was the library, and they raised over $1,000 for us, which is... It was very kind of the family to do that, and we appreciate it. This month, the library was working with five new board members for a library foundation. They have their IRS status now and were accepted by the state of New Hampshire as a charitable organization. So, we now have a library foundation, which is very exciting. The purpose of the foundation versus the friends, which we already have, is to raise money and to be able to invest it and put it towards large-scale projects in the future. There are, I would say, under 10 libraries in the state that I know of that have foundations, but I think it's an important business decision to do this for a nonprofit group. So, we are all set to go with that. We did not receive the grant that we were hoping to get for the outdoor facility, but I had a boss who once... Who would always say onward, and that's what we're moving. We're moving onward. We're hoping the foundation helps us get the money we want. We've got some... A few other avenues that we're exploring, so we can move forward with that project we were discussing. With that in mind, the library, as I mentioned, had joined the Chamber of Commerce. So, we're having our first... We're hosting the chamber, and I sent around invitations on April 2nd. We're having a morning mixer there. We're hoping... We sent out invitations to businesses. If a business did not receive an invitation, they're still welcome. It was all the businesses that we could find that we sent these to. People from all over the area should be coming, Chamber members, and it's a chance for Kingston to show off and show our... Put our best foot forward. I'm going to show off the library space and talk about what kinds of projects we want to do, and maybe this will help encourage to get some funding, to get things done. But it should be fun. We have... Fresh AF is sponsoring. I think Dunkin... Excuse me, Dunkin' Donuts is sponsoring. Rix is sponsoring, so we've got some food coming in, thanks to our new foundation. They've been doing a lot of legwork to get things done. They've been great. The library recently ordered no parking overnight signs and no loitering overnight, because we've had some issues, and Chief Johnson had mentioned this would make it easier for the police to patrol and to make sure that people aren't doing things they're not supposed to be doing, and Phil is going to put up the signs for us. Another important issue that I want to bring up is it recently came to my attention that the library may not be fully ADA compliant in terms of getting into the building. There's a lip on the sidewalk that's fairly steep. I've talked to Pedro about it, and I've talked to Phil about it. The library trustees are having me do a little research, so I've contacted the original architect of the building. I'm trying to figure out what that design originally was. Not sure we'll be able to do that, but that may be something that needs to be fixed, and Phil and I are talking about how best to do that, and I'll bring more information to the board once we figure that out. And then finally, I... Oh, actually, a couple of things. I provided calendars for the month, adults and children's calendars. I've also provided... I thought we've gotten so much out of this age-friendly community survey for the town. I wanted to do, from the library's perspective, what the ripple effects have been, so you can see some of the things that have developed out of that survey, including new programs for seniors, new partnerships, especially with Paul, Marissa, and myself, to boost services for seniors, transportation that Lori and I have been working on, and that's ongoing, moving communication for seniors. So, I've tried to show how everything's connected. There are some other things related to the town that I'd love to fit in. There are some other things related to the town that I'd love to fit in here so we can show people what's come of this big survey that we did, because it got a lot of attention at first, and I don't want people to think that it just died, because a lot is coming out of it. And the fact that you just voted on some of the housing tax breaks, I think, would be part of this, because that's another thing that came out of the survey that could go on here. And then finally, just a fun thing, we continue to offer new programs. From January to February, traffic at the library went up by 400 people. We're on track to do that again this month. We have no room for more programming in the mornings. We have added a chess group in the afternoon, but we are quickly running out of space to do more programs. But people are happy with the programs we have, so we're just going to, we're going to keep going, keep offering more services, and that's where we stand right now.
You might need to add parking at the Carriertown Plaza across the street.
That, yes, I'll talk to you about that.
A nice problem to have.
So, next door, they have agreed, I spoke with John, I think his name is, and they have agreed to let us use their parking for now because they're not filling their space. So, people are allowed right now to park over at the accountant's office, which is very kind of him.
If you have a new program, could you coordinate it and have it down at the Recreation Building? If you don't have room, but you have, you know, a number of people?
Yeah, Paul and I have been talking about doing programs together. We want to add more programs for kids in the afternoon, and we were talking about maybe dropping them off at the library and then bringing them back to the rec center a couple days a week. So that is something we're talking about, other spaces. I don't believe that, I always tell people a library is ubiquitous, so we can take our programs on the road. I don't think they necessarily have to be on site. So yeah, that is definitely something we're considering.
Well, I'm sorry you didn't get the grin, but knowing you, I'm sure you'll find an alternative source.
No pressure, right?
No pressure. Great idea, I'm sure it'll come to fruition down the road in a better, in a better shape of course. Good luck.
Quick question, Melissa. The increased attendance, increased visitation to the library, is it due primarily to the programming?
Yeah, I think so, because program numbers are going, are going up too.
That's what's driving the increase?
So it's not all new programming, it's also people becoming aware of the programming that we have.
Okay, thanks.
The parking really is a problem here, because there's so much going on, which is wonderful. I mean, who would've thought it would be that great? But it's, the programming is excellent, and it reaches out to different age groups within the community, and you've done a fabulous job, you and your staff, you've done a great job. Any other questions from Mrs. Mannan? Okay, Mr. Butler, our, Paul Butler, our Recreation Director.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome, Peter, and congratulations. Welcome back, everybody. I put a list of what the events we have coming up. We have a very busy week. I won't go into all those things because there's much other stuff to talk about. We have no parking problems at the rec center, I mean, zero. So one of the things is the trunk-or-treat, and I think we talked about bringing it up in March, because it's, seems like it's far away, but it'll be here shortly. By some counts, we had over 1,000 people there last October, and I think we need to be creative about a solution. Even the police officer was almost hit a couple of times, and that's not okay, obviously. So we, I've talked a little bit to Joel and Phil about this, but I don't know if that's a subject for the future, perhaps, but I just wanted to put it on everybody's mind. My first choice would be to block off from the boat, block Main Street off from the, for the, like, 6 to 8, from the boat ramp to Danville, Danville Road, and just let people in there to park, park on both sides of the roads, have people, at least two police officers there to monitor. I'm certain that the people that live there within that blocked-off zone come in, but I think that would take a lot more people. I don't know how many people we can put across the street from the boat ramp, how many parks can go, how many, how much of a parking lot, how many cars can go in there? But clearly, it needs something different. I wasn't expecting that many people. The year before, we had about 400, but, and it's, I think it's been such a popular event because adults and children both like it, that the adults are probably more crazed about what, who's going to win the trunk, and what they're going to do next year, and all these things. So it's really, I don't think it'll go, you know, exponentially again, but it's clearly not sustainable the way it is right now. So, that's something to, in the future.
Paul, why wouldn't you just rather than do all that, move it to a larger location? Parking lot in the school, or, you know, somewhere.
I'm strongly against that, because we're trying to establish, there's still people that don't know there's a rec center that live in town, like, we have a rec center? Where's that? So we want programs to be there. Other places don't have bathrooms, don't have, if it became really stormy or raining, don't have an inside facility that we have to put all the people that are there. The draft house is getting involved more with it, too, so they would be another place to go if it started to pour rain. Just lots of reasons, I would strongly prefer to keep it there. We used to do the Christmas tree light at the fire station, and bringing all that stuff there, and forgetting stuff, going back and forth, I just think that's the best location. But, obviously, it's not my decision in the end, I guess, but I'm strongly for keeping it where it is. And I think we can figure out a solution. Solution two, which I don't like that much, is getting a bus, and, you know, renting a bus and having it go, circle around, and from the high school, perhaps, people could park there. We do like a little, can't think of the word, but just back and forth. Shuttle, thank you, shuttling back and forth. You know, it's basically 6 to 8, it might be as early as 5:30, but, anyway, I don't, that's, I guess, just putting it in your ear, maybe we could talk about it more next month. Another one that is proceeding is, and I've mentioned this before, but having us, the rec department, with me driving, use the Brentwoods van. And that is, they're going to meet tomorrow, the select board, but it sounds pretty likely that we're going to get permission for that. I just sent Glenn, I just gave Glenn more information about liability. We may need more, I'm not sure, but they do have the same, they have Primex as well, so I think there's something about that, perhaps, that would connect that. But, there's training. As Melissa will attest, I'm a very slow driver and safe driver, so I'm not going to go bopping around, but...
Wouldn't want me driving.
But I'm excited for that. I think it'll be, it's, when you, when you get a bus and there's, you know, the bus carries 40 or 50 people, getting that number of people even between two towns is challenging. So I'm excited about being able to bring, I think Primex had only bringing 10 on this van, but bringing 10 people and just getting them out more regularly. Certainly seniors would be a priority. I don't know if it would help the transportation issue much, but it may in terms of recreation, things like that, but, so that's coming up. Oh, I did mean to thank the voters. I was happily surprised that our multi, multi-use, not pickleball, only pickleball facility was approved, so, and I know Phil's very busy, so I don't expect you to be coming anytime soon, and he, I'm not sure anybody's expecting that to pass, but we're very excited about that at some point. And camp is going great. We are full with a huge waiting list for every, every week. I think the second week, the 4th of July week, might be some openings, but we're in really good shape there. And the last thing I have, it might, again, might take more time, I have some information about it. Other, it's sort of a fundraiser, well, it is a fundraising thing for the Recreation Department or for the town, depending what the board wants to do, but Colette Travel, which has been around for 40 or 50 years, I think, they do traveling to, say, the one that we're proposing is going to Ireland, so they're big things, and they're, you know, a big amount of money. But what our job is, is to bring a group of people, 10 or 15 people, to them at a, at a meeting, you know, have some refreshments, and they try to convince people to go on this trip. For everybody that actually goes on the trip and pays, we get 10% of what they do. So this one is, I think, 3,000, so each person we'd get $300, and that's all we have to do. We don't have to, you know, manage the money. I would manage questions and direct them, you know, via email to different places. But I think it would be exciting, Exeter and Hampton both use them, they're both, have used them for years and are very positive about it. I don't think we'll get the numbers that they do. And one of the things is that, like, if you have enough people, the director could go for free. I'm not interested in that. They're going to Africa, I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine going to Portsmouth, so. But, it would be a nice way to raise some money, perhaps, like I said, go back to the town, or if you go to the rec center, if you go to wherever you guys decide, but I can pass that out later. I don't want to take up too much time today. But hopefully, people will come to Easter egg hunt on Saturday. Luckily, we didn't have it last Saturday, because we would've had to postpone it, but, and there really isn't a rain date, because it's kind of silly to do it after Easter actually happens, but it's at 9:00 AM at the rec center. So bring your children, grandchildren, whoever, love to see you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions for Paul, comments? Mr. Veyke?
Paul, this is probably a question for you as well as Phil. That parking lot to the left of the draft house, is that owned by the rec center? That parking lot?
Is it what?
Is it owned, is that the parking lot? That is not owned by the rec center?
No.
That part of the restaurant?
Yeah, so they have the part in front of the restaurant, and then that one next to it, and there's a fence, so that's owned by them. But they've been very gracious sharing it with us, like, for the Easter egg hunt, we can use that because they're not open in the morning. For the trunk-or-treat, it's more challenging, because, well, actually, I take that back. There, we do it on a day that they're not open, so they allow us to use that on the day that they're not open, so that's why we do it usually on a Monday. So that gives us some parking, but even with that parking, and parking up everywhere imaginable, it still was a challenge, so.
Thank you, Paul. Any other questions? And next is Marissa Federico, our Human Services Director.
Morning, everyone. Everyone has big updates today, I really don't. Everything's going well, volume's been steady, nothing exciting to report. The only thing I wanted to mention, that the Public Utilities Commission does not allow electricity to be turned off until after March 31st, so anticipate we may have some residents that have some big electric bills that may be coming to us, that happened last year as well, so I would expect maybe that's going to happen again. And I don't know if we wanted to talk about the social services, I think that was in the new, under new business in the agenda, but with everyone here, I don't know if we wanted to talk about having quarterly meetings with social service agencies, or if you want to push it till later. I think it's under new business.
Yeah. What's your pleasure? Do you want to wait, speak to it under new business? Anybody?
I think we can just do it now.
Yeah, okay, all right, yes.
Because a lot is going to happen between now and then, so you don't have to wait. So let's just do it now.
Okay, thank you, thank you, everyone. So at our last social services, our monthly social services meeting between Melissa, Paul, and myself, we thought it would be a good idea to coordinate resources with social service agencies that serve residents in Kingston. Right now, we have some that we pay, that we do not have regular meetings with. We thought it'd be a good idea to have them come in, share what they have available for the community. It would just be a department meeting, it wouldn't be necessarily open to the public, I don't think, right? It would just be us. Just, yeah, us, and then if we, something comes out of that, we would certainly notify the public and figure that out. Some of the things that we're particularly worried about, transportation, of course. For my office, there's financial assistance available through the state, and I don't feel like we have a full handle on everything that's available. I keep getting bits and pieces from different groups, I'd like to have that organized and know what's available to people. With inflation, we're seeing higher balances for rental assistance and fuel assistance, electric assistance, the requests coming in are higher, not necessarily more numerous, and I want us to get a better handle on that. Seniors, of course, and I would like to get some programs to promote financial independence, like job training, mental health resources, that kind of stuff. So we're hoping that by having these quarterly meetings, we can get service providers at the table, find out what's available, and better promote it.
The other, the other piece of this is, we were kind of backpedaling, because we like meeting with the three of us and seeing what's happening in town and how we're coordinating, which doesn't necessarily involve these other groups, though we were inviting them. So we were thinking, rather than inviting these groups every month, we would continue to meet monthly, but then change it to inviting them in quarterly.
So, I'm just remembering from our inquiry into public meetings and the need-to-know. I think if internal department head meetings like you're having is not a public meeting, but if we're inviting agencies that are public, then it becomes a public meeting.
Okay.
So you'd have to post it, take minutes, and post the minutes. Not to say that a lot of people are going to show up, but I'm pretty sure that falls under a public meeting, because it's outside of departments within Kingston.
Okay. Would it have to be recorded, if it's a public meeting?
It doesn't have to be recorded, you just have to have minutes posted. You have to post the meeting, you know, 24 hours before, and then you have to have minutes.
I think the benefit of that would be having the public see what's available, which they might not know right now.
Yeah, and then you could, I mean, if you wanted it recorded, you know, we could just maybe figure out logistics of that, if you're just doing it quarterly, but it goes beyond just an internal department head meeting, so it's going to go under the right-to-know.
Recording, it gets into more costs.
It does, absolutely.
It's not budgeted at all, but your minutes could be simple, the three of you in here, list that.
Well, no, this is, not the three of them, this is when they open it up quarterly to these other agencies.
I understand, there was more to what I was going to say. If you're three of them meeting with the public, public agencies, then you would list that as your, your minutes, in effect. So-and-so discussed the programming with X, Y, and Z. Doesn't have to be complicated, because no decisions are being made, but you're gathering information. And if the public comes to listen in, that's not an issue at all. But televising, it becomes a cost item, which we didn't have to talk about down the road. Anything else, Melissa?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Phil Coombs, our Public Works Department.
We're continuing with the perambulation with our neighboring towns. We've finished Fremont totally. Brentwood, we're missing three boundaries. Hampstead, there's also three boundaries, and then I've got Danville at the end of the week. There's going to have to be some money put into the budget for a surveyor to come out and either locate those or reset those bounds. There had been money in there previously, and I don't know what was carried in this budget, but a lot of them are ones that have been missing since 1946, in one case, so. At some point, we'll have to do something about that, other than just agree that we can't find it. The state is, or the DES specifically, is looking to expand the Green Snow Pro training. So currently, it's a voluntary program, I'm using air quotes, for contractors, unless they are in an MS4 impaired area, and then they are required to have this training. I met with a bunch of other road agents from neighboring towns, sat in on this hearing from the DES. Of course, the state is going to be excluded from this, and I've already filed a complaint with the DES regarding the state's salt usage, because what's going to happen, as we have three state highways going through here, I don't know if you've seen them going three-wide, spreading salt as they push it into the ditch, as they're just dumping it right in front of the other guy, plowing it off the side, they're never going to be held accountable for that, we will. What that's going to result in is a chloride impairment that we don't currently have, but if that does become the case, that's another thing that we're going to have to have for our MS4 filings, that will increase our engineering costs at least 14 grand, to have another best management practices, more testing, all of these things. I received a token response from the DES, but it falls into this, because this Green Snow Pro training started out being a voluntary program for contractors, and then in the impaired areas, it became mandatory. We take this training, we do our best to meet the standards of this and minimize our salt usage, but it's kind of pointless for us to keep our salt usage low if there's someone else going through town dumping salt at an insane rate beyond the unsustainable expectations for the residents. Every time they get on a state road and it's nice and wet and black, it's because they've dumped our entire salt budget in an hour. So, just want to keep you in the loop as that's progressing. The, there is a PO for the Grace Daley Barn work. This was... progressing. The, there is a PO for the Grace Daley barn work. This was the second place bidder. The first place bidder is no longer in operation. So I didn't feel this needed to go back out for bid. If it does, please let me know. But that's in there to do the barn work and the roof work.
Yeah, that's right here.
Eversource just finished the culvert work in the Webster Natural Area. So we got essentially a stream crossing put in for free by them. They had to do some pole work out there. And it came out really nice. We also, they re-grabbled the access road going into there, which works out for us in the long term because that happens to be where the potential well water site will be. So free road for us. While they were out there, I spoke with Eversource as I had heard that they were taking over the pole sets for Consolidated. For those who don't know, this has been an ongoing four-year problem. We have, at last count, 88 double poles. All of them are with Consolidated's equipment sitting on it. Everybody else has moved their stuff off of it. There is a pole license system. And Consolidated, after numerous attempts to work with them, they have no intention of doing anything about it. So we're either going to have to go after them financially, or I met with DTC years ago, well, a year and a half ago, a year ago, and I gave that information to Rich Wilson. But it's going to require basically some legislation on the board's part to bring them into compliance.
So, completely ignorant on this. So what's the impact of, when you say double poles, clearly I'm getting a picture of two poles together, right? What's the impact if they don't remove the one that's being unused, right? Is that, so?
So they pay a pole license, which I believe is $5 or $10. And then not a single pole license has been pulled in the town of Kingston. Actually, there's been one since 2015. But you are authorized to have that in our right of way. If they have two, they're, they're outside of that. They're violating the license. So what has happened is these double poles are ones that have been hit, broken, whatever, no longer serviceable. All the other utilities have moved their stuff off of there because a new pole has been set, typically by the other utility. Most of them by Unitil or Eversource for the larger ones. But the Consolidated has not moved their stuff off of the old pole. I can show you a picture of one that's on my property that's got basically dental floss holding it to the new pole, and it's hanging in midair. And it's still got the telephone apparatus on there. So it's basically shorting the town out of money it should be getting. It's unsightly, a lot of them are in the way, in our right of way, because they're so close to the road in a lot of instances. It's not exclusive to Kingston. But just asking them nicely isn't going to work.
So what do you recommend we, how do we follow up on something like that?
So when I met with DTC, they advocated for a pulse or a new regulation being put into effect and just fines assessed against, I mean, you basically have to hit them in the pocketbook to get them to comply.
I think you say it was Donnie Huetuck of the law firm, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
They, I don't even know how to explain this because it's just, like, basically, it's a hedge fund that bought the phone company, and they're just trying to maximize whatever dollar they can get out of it and not put any money into it. So that doesn't fall into the profit scheme. So they're not going to do anything about it.
But with other towns in the same position, is that something that we could work collectively with them? Or even through our legislature, God forbid, we should have legislation?
Well, unfortunately, what happened with this, I can get into the whole deal on it. But there, there was a class action lawsuit pending with the state. Consolidated made it appear that they would take care of the double pole problem in order for us to sign this class action settlement. And then about three days before the deadline for this, they basically revealed they had no intention of doing anything about the double poles. But at that point, our council advised that we had waited too long, and we couldn't get in on the class action.
This happened a few years ago when you were still on the board, right?
Yep.
Now I remember.
They are the definition of operating in bad faith, in my opinion. So I, they're not going to do anything about it. And again, I think Eversource has taken over a lot of these poles, but they've stayed, and I can forward the statement from them. They're not authorized to remove their stuff off of the old poles, the consolidated stuff. They can, they notify Comcast and everybody else to move their stuff off. But if Consolidated doesn't do anything about it, they can't remove the old pole because someone's still utilizing it.
Talking about a catch-22.
Yes.
Is it worth going to our attorney and having her look into it a little bit or having you give her the facts and maybe start some kind of a letter program? But no, not getting too heavy with it, just, as I actually said, they're only going to respond to?
I had received them, I had received DTC as a consultation from our attorney because they specialize more in utilities. I would most likely consult with Sansucci, your assessing, your utilities assessing contractor, to get his advice on what should be done.
And then send them a heck of a bill for taxes or valuation? And we need to change our ordinance to make that happen for them, the consolidated RSA?
So Sansucci would be aware of what the current state of this is. Like I said, this isn't exclusive to Kingston. Everywhere where they have pole sets in a town, they are not taking care of them. So. There's also the Main Street Bridge letter in there. So that was, previously, that was going to come out of the infrastructure fund. And again, if we are awarded this, this will be a 90-10 match. So we've already put up our 10%. I have not been depleting the bridge block grant specifically because we're, as I reported to the board previously, we're going to need more engineering done on this because trying to get this to fit FEMA's formula has taken more than anticipated. But, yeah, we would get 90% back at the completion of the project. The other side of this is the hazard mitigation plan that's currently undergoing. We can still be awarded the project, but until the hazard mitigation plan is complete, we won't get any funds. But that should be done within six months. And I don't, based on the timeline that we've been operating under thus far, I don't think that's going to be a problem.
So with regard to that, that PO that's in there for the 10%, we would have to essentially fund the project fully and then be reimbursed? Is that how that works?
Correct.
Okay.
But the engineering and wetlands permitting is pretty much equivalent to the full amount of the project. So we've pretty much spent that already. So we wouldn't, it would just be the actual construction we would have to fund. The plan at the previous board was the infrastructure fund.
Okay.
Can I, one, I don't remember what is on that PO, if it's the full amount or just the?
It's just a commitment letter. It's not actually a PO.
Oh, okay.
And it's just saying that we would have the money.
You said PO is on this one here.
That's all right.
We're talking about two different things.
He said PO, so.
No, we get your, we're all set there.
I was thinking of the previous PO that we were talking about for Grace Daley because I have a question about that. And that's where my mind was at that time, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Phil?
Well, I got a couple more things.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
You're not done?
So I had worked with Chris previously on the municipal bid, putting stuff out there. And I will create a policy on this, but obviously timelines are why I'm bringing this up now. What we had agreed was if an employee wanted an item that would go to auction, they would offer a price, and that would be the reserve on the auction. And if it went for more than that, they didn't get it. If it didn't meet the reserve, they could purchase it. That has taken place. We sold the kitchen equipment in the rec center. It did not meet reserve. So I just want to make sure the board is okay with the employee purchasing that or what you want done.
So what kitchen equipment?
The kitchen equipment in the rec center.
On the rec center.
Paul doesn't want or use, and it's just taking up a lot of space and creating a lot of smells for some reason.
So, so an employee gave a price that they were willing to pay for it. That then became the reserve amount. It went out to open bid?
Yes. It was on municipal bid for two weeks, and it did not meet the reserve price.
Okay.
So two things on that. The policy was that everything would go to auction to not have any impropriety. And I felt the leadership when that was listed could directly fall into that category as a conflict.
Yeah. Regardless of that, I don't think that we, as a town, would want to be sort of picking winners and losers and picking places where these things to go. I mean, I think that the open bid process is appropriate.
Does the, does the town have any type of a requirement that any of these department heads decides to sell something? They have to come before the board and talk to them about it? Or they just list up?
I don't know.
I don't think there's, I don't think it has been, though. I'm not sure. I think if they just sell it. I don't think that came before the board asking if.
That's, but it's town property.
They would have to come before the board to buy it. Why wouldn't they have to come before the board to sell it?
I'm not disagreeing.
Although I know this was donated.
Well, I think we got a list in the beginning, or a list of what Phil might have, or Joel might have, or whoever has, that's going to go get listed on the auction.
It's predominantly been, from my understanding, not from being in the Saltwood, but in general in the community, that when vehicles, in particular, were what went to auction and that people had an opportunity to buy them through the auction. Am I correct?
I don't think there was an issue because most of this was non-serviceable equipment purchased out of the Highway Equipment Fund. And we had a discussion that the money would come back to the Highway Equipment Fund because of that. So I think the discretion was given to me. The other parts of it have been stuff we're just trying to clean out of the state shed, most of which were the military surplus program that nobody purchased. It was just stuff that was sitting there being unused.
I would say that, I know I had a copier, and I found out that the museum wanted it. But if I didn't, I could just say, okay, sell it for me. And that, to me, is not fair. I think we should communicate and let, you know, let each other know if there's something. Maybe Joel wants a shelving unit that I have. So I just think it should come before the board or the department, something.
We need a process in place and make this equitable for all. I think that's the bottom line. But in the meantime, you've got some kitchen, Paul has some kitchen stuff he wants to get rid of, right? What's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, it's come through the process, and it hasn't sold by auction. And then past practice was that if an employee wants to put a bid on it, and it doesn't sell, then give it to the employee or have the employee buy it. That's what, that's what's out there right now. Whether we change that or not is another question.
Right. And we may want to let this one occur as has been past practice. But going forward, I think we need a policy in place that's a little bit more equitable.
Yeah, I'll work with Phil on that. So I think we're talking, so if you're saying, Tammy, you have excess supplies, right? So the first thing is check with the other departments and see if they need it.
She's saying you come to the Saltwood.
Okay, so was that done in this case for the kitchen stuff?
No, I don't, I don't know. But moving forward, so, is to check within the town to see if anybody else needs it. And then if not, put it out on municipal. Is that what we're saying?
It would be the other way around, wouldn't it?
I would say that it would.
Put out the bid first. Nobody buys it and put it out to the town.
No, no. See if anybody else needs it first within town.
But I would say that it should come, if I have to come before the board to buy a copier, I should have to come before the board to sell that same copier.
Sure. Right, right, right. But before that happens, if you have shelving and you no longer need it, do we ask the rest of the departments if they need it first? And if not, then you say, I'm ready to sell it. It would come before the board saying, I'm ready to sell it. We come up with the reserve price. If it doesn't reach that, if an employee wants to buy it, right? That's what we're saying. Right? Got it.
And where do the, so we're cleaning out, like, South Station. We have, like, some old light bars that are red that you're probably not going to want, and they're older than what you would probably want. Where does that money go? Does that just go back to the general fund?
That's a good question.
Where does it go currently? So if that employee buys that kitchen equipment, where does that, 2,500, 3,000, whatever?
So what was initially agreed upon was that if it had come out of a reserve fund specifically, like, you sell an ambulance, the ambulance would go back into the ambulance replacement fund. Or similar to me, like, I sold an old dump truck, that that money would go back into the highway reserve fund that purchased that piece of equipment.
So I get that. So, but if it didn't come from a reserve fund?
Everything else would go in the general fund.
In the general fund, okay.
And right now, everything's been going in the general fund because I was never told otherwise.
Okay. Item next. So I, I believe we're in agreement that the employee can purchase it for the reserve that was not bought on the auction, but that we want a policy in place before we go any further. Okay.
And presumably, then, that the proceeds will go to the general fund?
That's correct.
Okay. Does anyone want any kitchen equipment?
The question is, do we have any kitchen, kitchen equipment we want to sell? Thank you.
And one last thing.
Okay.
I didn't see it on the agenda, but I need some direction on the stairs, what the plan is.
It is on the agenda.
Okay. And then whether the board wants a roads presentation or whether they want me to engage an engineering firm, and they can provide their recommendations to you.
You said a road presentation?
Roads presentation.
For roads in town in general?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
The answer is yes, we do. I had an opportunity to go back down to Jericho. I was invited to go see the road now that it's been in place for a while. And I believe that we got some pictures from the resident at 40 Jericho. It showed some cracks in the road and some of the gravel on the side. Personally, the road didn't look bad, but it felt bad. You know, it was still rough. There was gravel on the sides where grass would be. They're still not happy, and I'm still conflicted, I guess is the right way. So, yes, I think a presentation would be good that the public would come and attend. We'll go from there. We need to make a decision so that you know how to go forward. And you've done a lot of work in trying to find an alternative to the regular hardtopping. But I think we still need to have a little more discussion, and I, and we need to make a decision one way or the other.
Okay. So putting the presentation is going to take an amount of work. And if we're going to retain an engineer, it's kind of work for nothing. So I guess.
Why would that be a work for nothing? If we stay with a chip ceiling, in other words?
No. I mean, I would be presenting what the plan would be for the upcoming year and beyond, as I did with the previous year. But if the board does not want that opinion and want someone else's opinion, then I can just get that for you and skip a step.
What skip, what step would you be skipping, engineer?
No.
Okay. I'm a little confused here, Phil. Help me out.
I'm trying to seek clarification, whether you want an engineer to prepare an assessment of the roads or you want me to do it.
What's the board's pleasure? Okay.
Well, I, we've never, we've, to my knowledge, we've never had an engineer come in and assess the roads in town, correct?
No, but I presented a, a bid by one of them to do that a couple of weeks ago for the board's knowledge of what that would cost.
Right. In the past, we've never done that.
No, we have not.
And in general, whether it's chip ceiling or asphalt, how many roads do we normally do being allocated with funds and what it costs?
Well, if we do previous practice of worst first and doing shim and overlay, not many. So.
So paying an engineer X amount of dollars to look at all the roads in town wouldn't be a bad idea. However, where, you know, if we had $500,000 a year to spend on roads, it'd be one thing. But we don't have that, and we don't do that many roads. So my opinion would be just, I mean, you looked at them, you know what it is. I think the big question is, is, is do we continue with chip ceiling or do we not? And we just do the normal roads with the asphalt? So my, my thought would be not to spend the money for the engineer to do the whole town when we're only doing minimum amount of roads based on the money we have.
Any other comments?
I think because of the reaction to the chip seal last time, and that was part of the presentation and part of the options, I think if we don't hire an engineer the presentation and part of the options, I think if we don't hire an engineer and we approve Phil's plan on the experience that he has, then we need to, I think, in my opinion, that we need to support that and not backtrack on the chip seal. If, or we say, yes, Phil, but take chip seal off the table. Right? Because if we're, if we're, if we've never done it before, if we've never done a paving engineer before and we've always trusted the expertise of the road agent to come up with the recommendations, then we either do that moving forward or we get an engineer and we trust them. And I think that's what we're talking, you know what I mean? That's what we're talking about. Because on the surface, it appears that we, the road agent said, here's the plan. He did it. People didn't like it. And I'm not saying that they're wrong and not liking it. But then we backtrack and it looks like we're not supporting his expertise and his decision to move forward.
And I don't think the engineering company is going to tell us whether chip sealing or asphalt is better. They're just looking at the quality of the road.
Well, I think they would probably, on the pavement index that you use, right? There's certain conditions of the road and it tells you how to fix it. I would think the engineer would do the same thing. They would go and say, this road is in this position. Your best option is shim and overlay or chip seal, right? So I would think we would pay them to do the same exact thing. So we either, you know, take the recommendation of our department head or we pay somebody to do it.
Yeah, I'm assuming it would be, the result if we hired someone else to look at this would be some sort of road service management plan where they look at the whole road system in town and come up with, you know, a ranking of condition and then an establishment or some sort of a schedule going forward of what, how it should be done. And I mean, that's a wonderful thing, but to be honest, the DPW department probably has a pretty good handle on what the road conditions are. And just remind me, Phil, what was the cost on the engineer to come up with a plan?
The one I got a quote from was, I believe, $32,000.
Okay.
Thirty-two thousand.
So before you say anything, I mean, where I fall on this is that, I mean, given the, given the issues that we've had with this, and I think I've said it already in public meetings before, my preference would be that we do not do chip sealing going forward and that we find a way to do the best we can with the budget we've got. And if it means that we end up paving fewer miles of road in a given year, again, you know, we're making choices here and, you know, we've got a limited amount of funds. And I realize that, you know, if we do some chip sealing, it allows us to pave more miles of road, clearly. But if the result is what we're seeing and what we're hearing from residents right now, I would really have a hard time supporting it going forward.
The other, it just, my, we've got two different, we've got engineering fees that could be there. Now, we're also talking about doing engineering fees to do the front steps. And we haven't got a price on that yet, I don't think. But, you know, if we decide to do both, that's a lot of money. I would prefer to opt if we do it, but be it for the front steps rather than doing the roads.
I'm surely not a road engineer, but what we're looking at at Jericho, I see two different problems. First of all, strip it off, throw it all over everybody's lawn. Second of all, we still got cracks across the road. So I'm not sure exactly what chip seal did to help us on Jericho Drive. It doesn't seem like Jericho Drive been fixed because of that process. So I think I'm in an agreement with Glenn that, you know, we have a limited budget for paving. And unfortunately, I don't think that's the way to go. So I agree with, I would agree with Glenn on that. Maybe just limit our production a year with quality versus trying to do something different, I guess. Just my opinion.
Well, I don't want anyone to think that we don't trust our department Public Works Director to make a decision on the roads. It's not an issue here at all. And for that reason alone, we don't need an engineer. I think, I feel very comfortable with your suggestion. The issue is more political than, and financial than anything else. And I think I'd have to agree with my colleagues. I'm really not in favor of chip sealing because of the backlash we had in Jericho Road. And they, and I understand their feeling, although, as I said, today versus last October when it was done, I thought it looked better because it was darker or whatever. But the gravel was still a rough surface and the gravel on the side and it started to crack in several places leads me to believe that, yeah, it saved us a lot of money. If I remember, it's about a third of the cost of hot topping or asphalt. And that's a big savings. We could do more roads, but I'll go back to some of my previous statements that a lot of people don't have, their tax, don't need the schools, but need their roads paved. And therefore, I kind of want to, I'm leaning towards that we should just go to asphalt. Can't say that there aren't some roads that you'd probably could easily do chip sealing that are not residential per se or side, I don't know how that works. I'm not, that's not my area of expertise at all. But a presentation of what we're going to do this coming year, I think that would be appropriate without an engineer.
So minus the chip seal option or minus chip seal on residential roads? Because that's, I mean, you know, that's a different answer, right?
It is, because I can't say no chip sealing at all because you're going to know better than anyone. You understand the problem with Jericho and some of the main roads. I think, I know you understand that. And that's why I say there's a political decision in here as well. And people to be that upset as it were of Jericho, I feel bad about it, I really do. But I understand the need for conservation of funds. I mean, you can't just keep spending money like crazy, but we live with asphalt. I want to stay with asphalt and go from there.
So given, given what we've heard, I would like a presentation, as you did last year, Phil, on looking forward to this year. And I wouldn't take chip seal off the table, but in cases where you felt that it might be appropriate, you could certainly present it and, you know, it can be discussed when it gets presented. But, you know, obviously, you've gotten an earful over the last year of what's happened on this particular road, so you're sensitive to it. But I mean, there might very well be some areas in town that we could do it and it might work.
Is that for non-answer?
Received.
So we really don't want chip sealing, but you have to use it, okay. How's that? Oh, my God. I don't know.
So he closed his book, that means. So I do have, sorry, go ahead.
The only other question, comment I have is, I think it surprised me to see the cracks in the road six months later. That really surprised me.
So I'll speak to that.
Okay.
Asphalt doesn't stretch when it's cold. So when the ground freezes, old cracks are going to reopen. The only thing that's going to fix cracks is a full-depth reclamation of the road and putting it back down as new. Even where we crack seal, where we have brand-new crack seal on the road.
Yeah.
Three weeks ago, when the road was still frozen, those had opened back up. The hope is that it's not going to rain when the ground's frozen like that and water gets in there. But rubber that's in cold temperatures is only going to stretch so far, same with asphalt.
So that's like the front stairs. It contracted and expanded and cracked and so forth. Okay.
And with regards to what that did for the road, it resealed the road so that what has basically happened is the oils have been cooked out of the road. It's an older road that has not been paved in a while, so it makes it more prone to cracking. So it's not going to stop the cracks that are already there. It's going to stop new cracks from showing up. The other side of that is, and why I'm a strong advocate for chip seal is the surface itself has a lot more grip with your tires. My job is to ride around in the middle of the night when it's snowing and find out whether we need to deploy the fleet or not to go and treat the roads. And so I would go and check those roads. And that was the one place I couldn't do, you know, fishtail my butt around in my truck or when I slammed on my brakes, it would actually stop. So I just ask that people keep that in mind, you know, on potential uses for that is on our more treacherous roads that are more narrow and things like that. It does offer greater stopping distance and more traction for the vehicles.
All right. Thank you, Phil.
Can I go back and just one question on the Grace Daley barn work?
Sure.
Which we have a PO in here for. Are you still, you being DPW, still planning on doing the excavation work? Because it didn't look like that was included in the price. Okay. But that the contractor would do most of the rest of the work. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Phil. And last, but certainly not least, Chief Johnson.
This might take a while. Everything's going good. I have nothing to report.
The new officer's working out okay?
Fantastic.
Good.
I've got a good crew. They're doing good. Arrests have pretty much doubled. Motor vehicle stops have doubled. We're pretty busy, but again, this is out of the job. That is all.
Any comments or questions for Chief? All right. Guess we can go on to our regularly meeting. Those of you that like to, oh.
We start the reviewing of the policies, which actually wants to get through that in partnership.
Yep, for sure. Anyone else that wants to leave, Ken? Okay. This here, right? Okay, Paula.
So I'll do the purchase order form first. We had updated the form because we had updated the purchasing policy a while back. And so I have to, I have to update this form yearly because there's a year on it. So it has to be the current, the current year. So I updated it for 2024 and it passed by me when I originally updated this that I forgot to add approved by finance line at the top when we had updated the purchasing policy back in August. So those are the things that, this is the new form that it's updated now.
Do you want to go through them all and then we can vote on them individually? What would you like to do, gentlemen, ladies?
Just, I would just do it individually as we go.
All right. So you can state a motion?
Yeah, I made the motion that we approve the purchase order revision as provided.
For 2024.
For 2024.
Beginning 2024, okay. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No, say no.
To change the date?
No, 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 no. It's effective, the effective date is, will be this date.
No, so, but she said one of the things she had to do was change the date on that form. So you want her to come back here next year to ask you?
No, that's not the date she would change.
I have to change the 20 budget year every year.
Well, because there might, it's not a bad idea to review it every year because there might be something else that needs to be changed.
That's ridiculous. She's the department head. She can change the date on a form.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah. Well, the only thing you need for data is the date it was originally approved. That should be on there. You could change the annual date. I don't think it makes a difference, but the date of approval for that format should be on there at some place.
So that was the only comment I would have made. Make sure that when you're using the purchase order form, it actually has the one, the copy that has the one on the bottom, right?
I will be sending it out with all of these to everybody.
Yes.
And then the purchasing policy, I had updated just a few things from when we did it in August because I realized that some things were missing. I'm trying to find it, I'm sorry.
Do you need a copy of it?
I have it, but the highlighted part didn't print, so. I think I just, thank you. Okay, so under part five, it says, it is the town's policy to have issuance of purchase orders for all items above 3,000. I added after that, unless the department slash committee budget is less than 20,000, then a purchase order is needed for anything above 500. Then in addition, approval by the select board is required for any purchases in excess of the line item in the budget. All purchases, purchase orders will be submitted using template. And then I refer to 4.2, which is the purchasing, purchase order. Numbering should be completed as follows, the year, department, PO number. And I put an example, it's 2024-BOs-1 if it was a Board of Selectmen. Each department slash committee shall keep a list of all POs that they have used. How do I, I don't know how to use an app. Well, here we go. All purchase orders are required to be given to the finance director for a review prior to submitting for approval by the select board. The purchase order must be given to the, these are all things I adjusted. The purchase order must be given to the finance department with all necessary paperwork to justify the expense no later than the Friday before the select board meeting, or it will have to wait until the following week for approval by the select board unless prior arrangements have been made with finance. All purchase orders must be approved by the select board prior to making the purchase, oh, never mind that one, that was already there. Once the purchase order is approved, the funds will be encumbered in the proper account and the purchase may be made. The encumbrance will automatically be removed by finance when the invoice is paid in full or when noted on an invoice. Otherwise, the unused funds will remain encumbered until such time as the department head authorizes the closure of the purchase order. And then we added, I added a section in the spending approval guidelines, 5.7, to say, so that the dollar ranges are 0 to 500. And then I did 501 to 3,000 as department head or committee board chair under $20,000 budget that a PO is required. We didn't have that broken out and I thought that was a little confusing. And I think that's the only area. Oh, emergency purchases. I just clarified that the department head must first notify the select board chair and the finance director prior to making the emergency purchase. I added the word and.
So both instead of one or the other?
Yep. And that's it for that.
So you had a question in here for professional services. So the select board shall be empowered to appoint the town attorneys and other professional consultants. And the question and the thing was, doesn't this apply to the planning board? Should we add them to this as well?
No, the planning board is a separate, and we say that.
Can you see that comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
The planning board is, has separate rules. So for a lot of these things, so.
Do we know who added that comment? Because it says PM, but I don't know who that, I don't know who added that comment.
I think I did. Oh, I guess, yeah, that spot is where we should add planning. Because they do have separate rules and they can hire their own engineers and stuff.
Okay.
None of us need bids for like those kinds of services.
So then we need to add some sentence or comment in there, that planning, okay? All right, so, all right. So you got that, right? Yeah, okay. It just didn't print on my printer.
No, I get it, I get it. Okay.
Peter Clark would like to comment on this. You're a member of the planning board and woman chair of ZBA.
Yeah, I'm here representing Megan. Kelly is, she's at work. So I did submit a response and I don't yet get a chance to see that, but the actual RSA I did submit a response, and I don't yet get a chance to see that, but the actual RSA 67316 gives land use boards, which is the planning board, ZBA, and the HDC, the authority to pay out expenses out of the escrow accounts that they create for professional services to evaluate applications.
That's if, if they have escrow accounts only, correct? Because the ZBA has not had them in the past, it's up to say they won't have them in the future.
Right, but, but the, but the actual RSA covers all land use boards, and we did institute escrow accounts. These are escrow accounts that are created at a meeting. This is why it says that it's maybe paid out toward that expense without the approval of the local legislative body.
Okay. And we had, when we first did this, we knew about that, so that, those are completely separate. This is literally just if planning or the town needs to hire a professional for them, not escrow accounts. Escrows, that has nothing to do with the purchasing policy.
Okay, that's what I was suggesting, that you just add a little exception that said if, if land use board is acting in accordance with RSA 67316, that...
So basically, if there's, if there's an escrow account established by a land use board, they can withdraw funds accordingly from those escrow accounts.
Right.
What's the RSA number?
67316, it's called.
I have it in an email.
Yeah. And I don't know if you want to address any of those comments, but it's, there's, it also references the other two RSAs, which one is for the planning board and one for the ZBA, and I'm sure there's probably one for HDC, that says that reasonable fees, in addition to fees for notice of, you know, noticing the meetings, may be imposed.
Yep, it's, it's only for escrow accounts, right?
Yes.
Those create, those create escrow accounts, and that's, but the escrow accounts are created at a meeting where it's decided, so that the escrow accounts aren't pre-existing.
Yep.
But this, this policy is just for town things and not the escrows?
Right, okay. So I, I just wanted to make sure that you, since you had put the comment in there, that, that perhaps, that understood that, those accounts are excluded.
Paula, we'll figure out the right way to word that.
Yeah, it's, it's just, and she just referred to planning, but it's, there are three boards that are affected by the statute, so.
Yep, got it.
And unfortunately, land use boards includes the building inspector, however they specifically, sorry, they accepted the building inspector for that statute.
Thank you, Peter.
And then you had a question, Paula, at the end. In section 15 for authority, you said, should we add a responsible department? So I don't know what that means.
Let me just get down there.
Yep.
Sorry, the screen is too big, I'm just minimizing it so I can see. Oh, that was, should we add something saying that the department that is doing the purchase has authority, like?
Can they have the authority to spend that money?
Yeah, or create it and...
So these policies are adopted by the student, and they're authority over expenditures. But the authority for the, but what we're saying here, I think this is reading that the select board has authority over the budget, and that you have delegated those expenditures as outlined in that table on what the department can spend without...
Yes, I was just adding that just to see what your thoughts are.
Yeah, I...
I don't know that we need it.
I don't think we need it, yeah. As talking through, I don't think so.
So the only change in this, and it's not really a change, is the clarification on land use boards, is that correct? Or not?
Yeah, and I, I mean...
Believe it as is? Because it's, the RSA is clearly spelled out what's going to happen with land use.
Yeah, and this policy is not for, this is for town purchases. Escrow purchases are completely a whole different thing.
Okay, yep.
But what I think we can add is, I can add, when I say, I forget what section that was in.
So do we want to...
11.
I could add, not just planning, but planning zoning board.
Or land use boards.
Land use boards instead, and that'll cover everything.
Okay. So do you want to approve it with that change?
Yes.
And let's take a motion then?
I'd make a motion to approve the new purchasing policy with the changes to be added in.
For land use management?
Yes.
Younger's board, sorry, Maggie. Okay. Further discussion? Phil?
The whole policy, we can take another comment.
Oh, I didn't realize it was under comments. Yep, we could, we could discuss it.
For the third state policy, call it 5.0.
Call it 5.0. So this is a change, any purchase in excess of the line item in the budget. So previously, that was just a hey you to the liaison. Is that acceptable still, or, well, previously it was not a written policy that, it's, unless we were going over the full budget for the department. So for specific line item, I mean, I went over on like seven or eight line items this year, and I mean, I typically would tell Chucker, just bring it up in a meeting, but just so you guys were aware, but do we want to formalize that process so it's not, well, I told them.
That's a good question.
Well, the way this reads, says in addition, approval by the select board is required for any purchase in excess, so we're approving those purchase orders anyway, so...
But let's say I'm over my sign line item and it's a $72 sign, you guys have to approve every $72 sign I spend in excess of that line item.
They absolutely should. That is, they need to approve, if you went negative, you should show you're negative, but the, it's the board's responsibility to know that you're negative and to say where that, those funds are going to be moved from to fix that.
Okay, so, to make it less cumbersome, wouldn't it make sense for department head to approach the board and say, hey, listen, I'm hitting the ceiling on item A in the budget, but I'd like to move some funds from item C to item A to, to, you know, to rectify that. But that comes to the board for discussion.
But you don't, you shouldn't move it, you should leave it where it is so that you can show that there is a need to maybe increase that line the next year at budget.
That's true, that, right, that's, I agree with that.
Right, and that's been past practice, you know, truth in budgeting is what it was always called, is just to keep running up that line if that's something you're keeping, I mean, I, Wicked creative, a lot of things can fall under snowplowing, but, like, it just, again, it was just a hey you kind of thing, but if it's every purchase, and I'm fine either way, I just want to make sure we understand that before we go in.
And I agree, I appreciate that. Comments from the board, my colleagues first? Chief?
So, it says every line item, now, line items include overtime, court overtime for me, regular overtime, training overtime. If that runs over, same thing, let you know, is it gonna, we're not using a purchase order to pay overtime, but if it runs over, status quo?
That's a good point, yeah, I don't know.
Because you're saying every, every line item, so I'm just making, just, are you talking purchasing line items or salary line?
No, I said for any purchases.
Just strictly, all right, I just want to clarify.
It's different than sales.
But if you go over anything, you should be telling the board.
Okay.
Yeah, the board, my, my two cents, I guess, is the board should know anytime any line item should be, should go over. And from what I understand with budgeting, from Stacy, is that the select board is the only ones that can approve moving money between line items. I know we're a bottom line budget? No?
I'm saying you shouldn't move it.
Oh, no, no, right, right. Not, not physically moving it, right? If I want to buy a computer out of my uniform line, I should overrun my computer line.
Yes.
But that $2,000 needs to come from somewhere, so it should be...
So you know you're...
So I, I don't think it's, I, hey.
So could we make it that...
Feel my pain?
So could it be a simple thing, an email to Susan that says, I'm running over my, my uniform line, but to buy, or vice versa, I'm running over my uni, my computer line, but I'm going to save that money out of my uniform line to offset that cost? Is that enough of a notice?
Okay. Mr. Stacy Dadd, Budget Committee.
Budget Committee. I think it's important for you to show where you've gone over, but if you go, if the departmental budget is, it has a potential of going over, the select board needs to be aware of that because there is a potential where you would have to move money. So let's, we'll use paving, sorry. But let's say we were going to go over budget and paving, and it could cause your, your bottom line budget to go over. The select board, we need to be able to move money from another line item or, from another budget to the highway budget to, to cover that, so that at the end of the year, when it's reconciled and we review it, that there is coverage. Because if you go over our bottom line budget, you, department heads are held, should be held accountable to that bottom line. And if there's a reason to go over, then they would need to move that money to that, cover that line item or potentially that budget. And I think that's, communication is important, and I would just, you know, the budget committee does look at whether you go over and whether you need to increase that budget line, that budget item, or if you would need to overall cover something or increase something. Or, let's say you're not using the contingency fund, that if you do need to move money to that, that you're letting us know that you're using that fund, so that we don't cut it without realizing that you used more money than, than we can see in a simple spreadsheet.
So anytime a purchase order comes before us that's over, whether that's special, that specific line item or not, then the department head should be here to be able to talk about it. Right?
Correct.
So...
But if it's not a purchase order? If it's under $3,000, it wouldn't be a purchase order?
Right.
And, for example, like I said, signs.
Yep.
I went over on that line item, I informed the board.
Right.
But do I need to inform the board every time, or do we want to formalize that so there's a matter of record that I informed the board?
Because once you go over it and you need to keep spending on against it, you're going to be over it for the rest of the year.
Correct. Or like Joel said, if he's over his overtime budget, he's over it, it's just going to keep happening.
Right, right. So it's a notification thing, right?
It is a notification thing, and I think it makes sense to come to the board, say, listen, I'm, this is going to be over, over budgeted or under budgeted with this, over expended is the right phrase. And we could say, okay, you can go up to $500 above it, because you know, you'll know you have to X amount of things, gives you the coverage and the authority from the board to go ahead and do that, knowing that the bottom line stays the same.
Even if it's under 3,000, because they don't...
Well, if you're over expending, it's an issue.
It's an over...
It might be a one time.
Right.
It might, it might not. If it's not especially, it needs to be, it needs to go forward. Does that make sense? Is that, I'm not trying to be more complicated.
No, I just want to make sure that, like, in the past, it's just been, hey, I'm going to go over on this line, and maybe there's a brief discussion about, like, raising that in the budget next year because, you know, last year with catch basins, we went over because it rained a lot and a lot of catch basins failed.
Right.
So we spent more than we probably normally would in normal year. We also upped that budget line item, but, I don't know, I'm just making sure that we're staying within the param, I think previously it was, if you're going to go over your budget, but any line, I think most of the other department heads would inform the board of that.
Well, you didn't do the bottom one, but for more transparency, I think it makes sense to notify the board if it's going to be an ongoing overage or over expenditure, then we need to certainly clarify that as an expectation.
Well, and maybe at that time, let's take signs for an example, you know, if you anticipate what your sign expenditures are going to be from now till the, till the end of the budget year, maybe the request is to move, make a move of money to, into that line, and that way for, you don't have to keep coming back.
Yeah, the problem with that, though.
Yeah, but then we could note it on the, I, I hear that, we could note it on the budget that said, we moved the money from here to there, and then, so for next year, we know we need to up it.
I, I think that's what the important part is, right?
Yeah.
So we go through a whole budget cycle and we budget at the end of the year, and if, if department heads are going over on a budget line item or anything, whether it's overtime or whatever, we, we really just want to see truth in numbers, right? We want to see where you went over, where you didn't go over, where, where we can potentially increase or decrease depending on what we're looking at. And if we're not, if that isn't documented and it isn't communicated, or we don't have any transparency, we won't, we, we can't see what we can adjust, or if there's a huge increase, we won't know.
You got it, you got it, you got it. Okay.
And then on, just that last part, that, about who owns or whatever it is, what was it? The authority, I just realized that's what I was thinking of, is who owns the policy? Like, who, what department, or who created the policy? I think that should be under the authority as well. Does that make sense?
No.
So, so, for this one, in instance, we would put finance director, because finance director created this policy. If it's something the fire department created, fire department would be on there. Do, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what that was, who the responsible department, that's what I was meaning.
Yeah, I think we should, we, we could figure out where to add that in the template, but I don't, because that section is not there in all of the policies, so it just needs to be a standard part of the template instead, so, I got it, yeah.
Perhaps it could be down where the revision note is at the bottom or something.
Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Or with authority, like, who the authority is.
Yep, I got it.
Whatever.
I'll figure it out.
Okay, we need to move on from here.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve this policy as amended? Is it further dis... Yep. Yep.
So, I'm seeing if you're a bit or not qualified bidders, and specifically, Mike?
Specifically, like, we had a bidder, or a contractor last year not do what he was supposed to do. He was going to fix some work, he did not do that. I want to make sure that it's a matter of record that that person can no longer bid work in the town of Kingston. And so that would remove them from the responsible or qualified category for any of these projects.
Okay, how does that figure into this policy?
Well, that's what I'm wondering, would that fall under this policy? Because it lays out the, I mean, the work was in excess of $25,000, so, they had, if it's below $25,000, we're not laying out the specific pre-qualification criteria. So at the very least, if someone burns us on something, can we have a, a process to non-qualify them moving forward?
Or, or do we just have persona non grata list for the town of people that we don't work with?
Okay, that's separate from this policy, though.
I see what he's saying, though, but yeah, it is separate, so it would be something else that we'd have to think about. Because I don't know where we would, I mean, if we have a persona non grata list, we would reference it in there.
I think that could be addressed by, in the definitions, responsible bidder is just, you know, determining responsible in our words. I know we, for the pre-qualification, we have criteria, but maybe just determining responsible is satisfactory, completed all previous work with the town of Kingston or something like that, just quantifying what a responsible bidder is.
Do we have that in another place, what a qualified, what constitutes a qualified bidder?
I don't think we do.
Well, then that's another policy that needs to be developed.
This is where all the bidding stuff kind of...
Is in this one here?
Right now.
Okay.
Well, you know, just like the town keeps a separate fee schedule so that we don't build it into ordinances and stuff and have to update those through, through formal action, the fee schedule is a, is a separate item and it can be modified as needed. Maybe there's a separate schedule that has...
For qualified bidders.
For qualified or non-qualified or both.
Bidders, vendors, I think we should.
Yeah, sure. And I think that would remove a lot of the qualification process if there's, you know, we're taking trucks to Mahoney's all the time to get an engine repaired, then we don't need to re-qualify them.
Correct, correct.
Oh, that's a good one.
Was there another item to fill?
No, that's it.
You're sure?
On that one, yes.
On that one.
That could be added, just a line item under number seven, couldn't it?
Well...
Yeah, let's, let's get this one off, get everything...
To be added to bidding. Well, we're having a qualified bidder... Well, we're having a qualified bidder list, separate.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Moving forward. Let's see, the P.O. template, you want that approved as well?
Yeah, we already did that one.
Okay.
So now it's just the invoicing policy.
Yeah.
Invoice processing.
Okay, do I have a motion on invoice processing, guys?
No, we have to go over it.
I understand, but we can have a motion on the floor to discuss it.
Oh, okay.
Yes, motion to, well, motion to approve the invoicing.
Sorry, motion to approve the invoicing policy?
Second.
Second.
Now the discussion.
So, this weekend, as I was like, you know, thinking about work, obviously, I thought of a few things that I didn't put in here that I think should be based on, because I was going through the retirement audit, and I know the regular audit, that invoices, so, it's the 5.9, I'll go through the rest, but it says it's the individual's department responsibility, no, I'm sorry, it is the individual, 5.8, to keep full backup to all invoices submitted and to make sure that the invoices are kept in full or scanned in full completeness. So, just remembering from the audit last year, the originals need to be kept, because the auditors have the right to ask me for the original invoice. So, the invoices, and we cannot purge anything until one year after the audit. So we just got audited for 2022, so now I could throw out shred 2021's backup. So I just wanted to add something until one year, the original form until one year after audit, and the Finance Department will let the departments know when they can purge the invoices. The other thing that I thought of is on 5.14 for W9s being required, the depart, I forgot to put that, the department shall forward the original forms to Finance, because they have to stay here.
The original, I9s need to be in the...
W9, W9 for vendors, 5.14. Those are the things I just forgot to...
So on that one, Paula, is there a timeline, those have to be updated, or is one W9 good for...
Technically, they should be updated yearly, honestly. You don't know when somebody moves. If getting a letter from a vendor saying, we moved, that is usually not good enough. They, in my classes that I did, they actually said you should get a new W9 when they say they moved, because you don't know who really sent that.
But barring someone moving, I mean, if someone's just at the same location, no changes, we don't need to get a new W9 every year?
Not really.
No, not necessarily, but I could require it if I felt like that I was getting things returned, or, I had a bunch of 1099s that I sent out that got returned this year. So I'm trying to update everything, because I don't know when the last time our vendors were updated properly.
Okay, so if they're updated and you have no, none of them returned, can the department head assume we can go forward with that one without doing another?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah.
I'm just trying to minimize some paperwork here. I mean, if this, if, take Ralph Mahoney, I mean, chances of his, unless he changes it or one of the sons takes over...
Honestly, going, doing 1099s this year, I had a quarter of the W9s of the 1099s that I sent out. So I have no idea where these figures came from.
Okay.
So I, I need updated information, at least for this year, and then going forward.
Further discussion?
By law, we need to have W9s.
Incompleteness for 5.2?
Mm-hmm.
I just, do we wanna define that? I know there's...
Meaning, the form needs to be in full on the, on the scanned page, it can't be cut off, I can't have dates missing, numbers missing, invoice numbers missing, it has to be the full piece of paper that you're scanning in, needs to come, they need to be scanned in, in full, incompleteness.
In its entirety.
In its entirety.
Maybe change completeness to in entirety.
In its entirety, how's that sound?
And then just right under that, all invoices except for utilities and recurring invoices will then be emailed in, in full to the, to the department for review. I would like to remove that exception, just because a lot of those utilities fall under our department to monitor, and specifically Waste Management is a recurring one that...
That's under utilities, though. Am I correct?
I mean, this says except for utilities and recurring invoices, so it doesn't...
Oh, but so Waste Management would be a recurring invoice?
Correct.
Okay.
And in the past, if those were stayed here, because there's a huge pile of them, and if they were needed, the department can come get any invoices they want. I just didn't scan them to the departments. So for instance, if, I'll just use Graham because he's right there, if he asked, can I see my electric bills? They'll come and look at them, take what they need, and bring them back. Because we had an issue that one of their bills was way higher than it normally was. But I don't scan those to each department every month, because the pile is literally this big.
Okay.
And there's a lot of invoices that don't get prior approval from the department heads, meaning all the utilities, the Waste Management never was, the telephones aren't, they're just paid, because we have to pay them.
So is Waste Management not being paid automatically anymore? Is that what I'm hearing?
No.
No.
It is, but we need to track the data from that invoicing.
Okay, okay. So what am I missing? What needs?
Well, that's why I put that, because I'm saying that, if I get an invoice, what this was saying is, if something got mailed here, I'm just gonna use Reinhold Security as, because it just happened. If I get a bill from Reinhold Security, I'm going to open it, stamp it that I received it today.
Yep.
And email it over to, in this case, DPW.
Okay.
The, so, what this was saying, I will do that for all invoices except utilities and recurring bills, as I was just talking about.
So you won't do that for Waste Management, but they still need the information from Waste Management?
Which I put, I put the tonnage and everything in the description.
Okay.
But if they want it, they can come get them. That's what I'm saying, this is how it's been done since I started here, and prior.
So, I mean, like, we get the tonnage breakdowns from Waste Management, what the, what the invoice provides is per day where they're pulling tonnage out of, so that allows us to identify areas, if there's a certain route that is like exponentially higher on their trash, or recycling, why is that? And it also helps when we're identifying contamination areas, at least we can hone in on them, roughly what route they're on, when we get hit with a certain area, so...
So instead, so what Paula's saying, instead of emailing them, they would be, she would have the hard copies for you guys to come pick up, right? Is that what you're saying?
Which I always have.
Okay.
Because I try, I put, every month, I put, I add up the tonnage on Waste Management, I put in how many watts on each phone bill in the description when I'm paying it, so that that information is sent over.
Further questions, comments?
The only other one I had was 5.6, does the town have payment terms that we'll adhere to? Because I know some people just say payment upon receipt, or net seven, or whatever, I mean...
This is me making that. What was your, say that again, Phil, what was your question?
I guess I didn't see that.
So, generally, when you get a bill, don't we follow, they have net something on there, right? Like net 15, net 20?
Some of them.
Okay, what was your question?
I, I'm just wondering, what is our policy on it? Because someone can demand whatever they want, but if there's a, a policy for the town that we pay net 30, or net 15, or whatever it is...
Oh, no, we generally pay whatever the, whatever their net is.
Weekly.
Yeah.
I pay bills weekly.
It's probably the only town in, that I know of that pays weekly. I mean, most towns, at least familiar with the ones I've been involved with, at least, you know, 30 to 60 days, and most vendors understand that it's a process and all that. So, my thinking is, you, if you pay them weekly, fine, and it's consistent and you can do it, but you don't have to pay something...
We don't.
Don't have to pay the phone bill if you get it on the first by the fifth.
And that's why I put, our, the net term must be paid within the term of the invoice date, unless otherwise specified.
Well, even at that, if somebody says, I wanna get paid in 50, unless it's a contract or something, but if somebody wants to get paid in 15 days, to get paid when you're ready to get it paid, what, you know, it just, you, my opinion, you shouldn't be under that much, much pressure to worry about that. If it's, you know, you don't pay it for 45 days, that's one thing, but, still, you have 30 days for, any of us have 30 days to pay a bill, unless it's a contract, you know, and they say, look, we're gonna do all this, but we wanna get paid in 15 days. And we agreed to do that, then that would be fine, but...
I understand, but if we, if a vendor gave us a bill, and we have to pay it in net 10 days, and we don't, they will charge us service charges.
Yeah, but he's saying, he's not talking about the ones that say net 10, he's talking about...
Well, that's why I, I just said if to the term on the invoice.
Right, so...
So otherwise...
I, I just, it's just, it's a personal thing, it shouldn't, we're a town, it takes time, you know, you happen to sit there and do it. But I'm sure the town of Rochester doesn't pay in two weeks, you know, and if we've got a vendor that says they want it in 10 days, well, maybe there's a different vendor out there, I don't know.
But, okay, I'm gonna pay devil's advocate.
Honestly, it's easier for me to pay it weekly.
What's that?
It's easier for me to pay it weekly than hold it.
Okay.
But I, when I get invoices, I type them in, I have their net terms in the computer, it says when they're due, but the way this town has always done it, and a lot of actual, a lot of other towns, because I got other towns' policies, they pay weekly.
So when we have tax bill time and we don't have enough cash flow, need to...
That is when I have the chance.
That's when we know that.
Yes.
And when you have a good track record of paying within two weeks, it makes it easy.
It gives me the option of holding off a week or two if I need it to.
Right. That's when, that's when that service is repaid in kind, if you will.
Yep.
And of course, you know, back in the day when money in the bank was earning decent interest, I mean, 30 or 60 days could mean a significant amount of money.
True.
That isn't the case right now, so, I mean, unless we've got our money invested in a place that's doing better than my money's doing.
Right.
So, so it's not a money thing, necessarily, it's not, not saving money, but, anyway.
All right, anything else?
Nope.
All those, that's good, that's all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they know, ayes have it, motion carries. And the other policies, before we put you all to sleep? One other item that we, before you leave, is changing the time for department head meetings.
I'm gonna re-make that, that's the main.
Right, yeah, we've been asked, because some people actually work during the day besides the town employees, right? We've been normally meeting at 9 o'clock on the last Monday of the month, would anyone be opposed if we moved it to 2 o'clock in the afternoon on Mondays, so that we still had a Monday meeting, but later in the day to accommodate some working folks in the room?
And I'm gonna bring that up one more time, so I'm the one that actually mentioned that, but seeing what goes into this meeting and the time that you always have it, I understand most of you people work here, I understand some of you are retired, I'm fine with staying where it is, but if there's a certain emergency that I can't be here on that Monday morning, I may not be here. There's only one out of the five members, but I, I, like I told you, when, I was elected to the position, I do have my own business, I can make my own hours, but there may be that odd circumstance that I will not be able to show up on that Monday morning. That's okay.
All right, so the preference is to leave it at 9 o'clock, as it is now?
Yes, I think it just works for everybody.
With, 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 just, just a question, Peter?
Yeah.
If it were moved to two or three?
Yeah.
Would that be better for you, or could you end up with the same situation?
No, no, the reason why, to be honest with you, Glenn, my day usually starts at like 6:30 in the morning, so...
Just like Phil.
Now it's almost gonna be 11:30, 12 o'clock, we get out of here. I've lost almost three quarters of my day.
Yep.
To come to this meeting.
Yep.
That's why I suggested that, but again, seeing the involvement, the community involvement, the participants, the people at the table, if, if it's understanding that, you know, they may be in a cave sometime and I cannot be here that mon, that Monday, then so be it, I'll leave it the way it is.
Then let's leave it the way it is.
That's my recommendation.
Okay.
I think Stacy had a comment.
Paula, you can have your computer back.
I did have a comment, because this meeting's supposed to be for committees as well, but most committee heads are, have full-time jobs and cannot attend it, and I think that it, it kinda, it would be nice if it was at a different time, so that more committee heads would be able to attend and speak on behalf of their committees, just a comment.
Well, another, I mean, another way to cut the, cut the apple, if you will, would be, if this meeting were left the way it is, and maybe a time at one of our other evening meetings were carved out at the beginning to allow for committee and, and, and board comment?
Yeah.
And separate them.
If the board allowed me to, to address the board, as a, as a suggestion, will it be a possibility that this meeting be also prepared via Zoom for those other boards, that they can connect via maybe a phone call or a video call, I mean...
Now, now you're challenging our technical capabilities, Pedro, I mean...
Which is number one on my priority list for our board.
I mean, we're head and shoulders above where we were, but I'm not sure we're at, at quite at that level yet.
It's a great idea, but let's, let's keep that thought, let's not forget it.
I like your argument.
So I'm, I'm, I've gathered that we're gonna leave it as is, and offer the opportunity for committee chair to, to address the board at our regular meetings. How does that sound, everybody? Because I personally like the 9 o'clock, I'll be honest with you, because I like the Monday night off every once in a while.
My suggestion, though, on the committee and board, I mean, there's always the opportunity for committees and, and such, to, to, to address the board during public comment at any meeting, but I'm thinking that if, if like we do this on the fourth or last, whatever it is, Monday of every month, let's say on the first or whatever, on a regular schedule, it's on the agenda as a specific item.
We can add that.
For, yeah, okay.
Yep, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay, I guess, thank you all, I know it's, it would take a five-minute health break, seven minutes, whatever. Thank you all.
Thank you for bringing that up, but, okay, thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, yep. That's okay, but I'm glad we addressed it in the group.
No, no, I appreciate it, thank you.
Totally.
No, no, I mean, I, you know, a lot of people fall, nothing, but, 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 for the record, and after that, if that, I'm saying, saying, so I think, I think this is what I wanted, I wanted, right?
Yes, yes.
My, my chance, missy, missy, to be honest, to be honest, but, however, just maybe it is.
Exactly, exactly, yeah, exactly.
Same with, same with anybody. Correct, correct, that you could also, also be on the power, right? So, so, and it's, and it's, yeah. This, this, I mean, this, 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 Yes. Pardon me, I'm sorry, I'm.
It's not budget funded, it's really easy money.
Okay.
I could do that as a during the day-to-day, Susan.
It's our money. It's just, it's just coming back to us. It may not come back to us, maybe you're killing it.
We can do this in an hour, yeah. Or less. I thought it went well, yeah.
But you know what, now that it's done, it's best.
No, it's not, we have longer.
We still have a whole meeting.
I know.
There you go, carry on. You're leaving, you're here.
I don't know, it's too cold. That's funny. Technically, we should have a motion on the floor to adopt it in a second.
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the Barnesman flowchart as presented by Mr. Landry and the Heritage Commission.
Okay, in a second. And Mr. Landry, discussion.
Well, these are our, our final drafts of both the process that we've worked on with Susan. The process that we've worked with Susan. And then also the seventy-nine D evaluation form that we would use to evaluate each of the properties to determine the appropriate percentage of abate, tax abatement that would be, be appropriate for them. These, there is a, that the Department of Historic Resources has an advisory committee on architectural, I mean, agricultural structures, or something of that title, anyway. And they basically advise D H R on things like seventy-nine D and the value of preserving historic properties for the public benefit, and what, what factors one would look at in determining the public benefit of maintaining those structures. And so, this, this form represents some of those factors. And then also some factors that we think are valuable to the town as far as public benefit of having these, these structures involved. Are they the absolute best factors to do that determination? That's a question anybody could, could have, I think. And I'm not sure that they are the best. I think they're good factors. We've worked on them, and, and as I say, are consistent with other documents like that advisory council property. But I guess the key to it is, does it provide a consistent way of evaluating each application? And that it does. And we feel like that's a really important feature for us to make sure that everybody is treated the same way, using the same criteria.
Totally agree. Thank you. Comments from the board, or questions? Thank you for the work you did on this. It's very important for us to have a process in place. And I thank you and the commission for its energies in this event.
You're welcome, and Susan as well. Susan was a big part of this as well.
Yes, thank you, Susan.
And, and, and having this set up the way you proposed it, where the Heritage Commission is actually kind of the first, well, it's, it's the first step in the process, the, the, the party that does the initial valuation, does the site visit, and all of that, is, I think that's the appropriate thing, and I think that's a good, it's a good way to do it. Great.
Thank you again. Okay, any other discussion or comments?
Thank you.
All those in favor of adopting the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ayes have it, and it's been adopted. Thank you. Next item, we wanted to follow up on the town hall renovations discussion.
Phil?
We're going to talk about the front stairs. I know it's your favorite one. So, ladies and gentlemen, what is your pleasure about how we proceed?
Well, by being the, the people and the concern that showed up the other night, I'm inclined to figure out exactly what it costs to get the full steps as they are, whether that's something that can be done by the concrete company, or if it has to actually be engineered to the extent of, you know, what, what will make it hold up, and what we need for a base, et cetera, which Phil already has a very good idea about that stuff. But I think that we, this whole list of stuff, we've been procrastinating for a long time with it, and we need to start getting some of this stuff done. And stairs seems to be the priority on the list. So, I would guess, you know, we, we need to, we need to move forward with it as soon as we can, whether Phil thinks we need the engineering part of it done or not. But if we do need the engineering part done, then let's get it done.
I personally would like us to have an architect look at the town hall in its entirety. And I, and I say that because I don't want to gerrymander the project. There's a lot. And then we may need a five- or ten-year plan on what we need to do with this building. I don't want it to be half-hearted. I, I personally don't mind the prefab stairs, to be honest with you, because when all is said and done, you're not going to notice the difference. And we certainly have aluminum siding in the, in the historic district, so I'm kind of comparing that. But my real concern is that it's not just the front stairs. It is the HVAC system, it is the audio system. We're looking at expanding office space for more employees. We didn't get the full-time land-use person this year, but I'm hoping by the third time around, we get that position. We're looking for a part-time position in the building inspector's department. I don't want us to half-heartedly make improvements without a master plan in place as to what we can do with this building. The, the charm of the building is not so much the concrete stairs, in my opinion, but these windows, that cupola, the brickwork on the outside, which is still in pretty good condition. But once we start adding the, a proper HVAC system for both floors, we could run into other problems. We talked about the rat's nest of wiring that's in different places. And we've, you know, people have volunteered to do things for the town over the years that maybe we can't do that thing, things that way anymore. And we have a new fire station, you know, the town hall garage is in good shape, the fire, the police is in good shape, especially with the garage in back. Certainly put in a ton of money into the museum. But I really think the town hall needs to be addressed in its entirety. And if the first step is, the first piece of that is the steps, even better. Because I certainly have been one, for the last four years, I've been grumbling about those front stairs. So, I'll stop grumbling if we have a big plan in place. And that's why I think we should take architectural funds out of the ARPA funds to address the proper renovations of this building that meets the needs of its focus in the center of our town, and is part of our historic district, and also meets the needs of all the employees and the townspeople that come in to the building.
I agree. I think we should have somebody, we'd need a holistic look at the town hall, understanding that we have some immediate needs. And I think heating, right, the whole propane, we can't get that filled this year, right? So, I think, what?
Do oil.
Right, okay.
Do okay.
Oh, okay. So, I, I agree. I think we need a holistic look and come up with a five-year plan and figure out the best way to do it. Because if we keep piecemealing it, we're going to have to deal with this again in ten years.
If not sooner.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I also agree that, that an overall plan is probably our best, our best option at, at the moment. Depending on what the outcome of that is, I mean, there, there is a way to fund that. And the select board has the, the option to dip into those infrastructure funds. It's a, it's a, depending on what, depending on what the, what the recommendations are, there are possible funding sources for it, so. But I've got to say that, in addition to that, if, if, if there's a way that we can address those front steps as a separate, I mean, because it is kind of a separate piece. If that could be done now, fine. If not, granted, it doesn't look great, having the barricades up there, and I know that that's an issue for a lot of people. But if it, if it means those stairs stay in place for the time being until we know what the overall plan is, then I'm fine with that, too.
It concerns me only because we keep redoing it. The last time was like twenty sixteen? Twenty eighteen? That's not even six years ago. And, and they've been barricaded for at least three of those, four of those six years. Three, for sure.
So, I think the only, one of the immediate things that we need to think about is the ARPA funding, right? So, if we get a holistic overall plan, and we, we're in receipt of that soon, we just have to obligate funds by the end of the year, right? They don't have to be expended. So, we have until 2025 to be expended.
Right, but we have to decide what to expend this year.
Right, right. So, if we get a holistic plan for the town hall, and then we realize we need to obligate funds by 2024, because we don't want to lose the ARPA funds.
Hell, no.
Right, so then we, so then we, and then after that, we would look at the other funding sources that Glenn alluded to. So, I think the first step is getting, if that's the way we go, is get that. And then we take a look at what we need to obligate for ARPA funding and get those done.
Right.
Right.
Does that make sense, Phil? I know. Good thing you have broad shoulders, right?
My only request is, if this is the route the board wants to take, I hope this is the route that the board will stand for. I felt the decision was made when I made the previous presentation, and then I was left on my own to get tomatoes thrown at me. So, and that's one of many meetings I've been in where that's been the case. So, I just ask, if this is the route we want to go, we're going together, not just me in front. That's all.
I don't blame you for that comment. And my answer to you is, yes. We go forward with the drawings and go, and do the best we can with all of us as a team.
Back to the front steps. Which I think Glenn's right, it's a separate whole issue, rather than architects for the whole building. And I guess my question to Phil is, do you still feel, from the step standpoint, that we need something to, if we replace the whole steps, need an architect for, or who, an engineer, whoever would come up with the proper way to do it? Or is that, or would you be comfortable with having, as per the fellow that was in here the other night, the concrete guy, coming in, looking at it, seeing what it's going to take, and able to get a price?
Fundraising isn't my strong suit. And marshalling volunteers is definitely not my strong suit. I, I.
I don't, I don't mean.
No, we're not looking for.
I, I just feel in today's, I had separated out the architect from the stairs and the building. There was another one, as the chief pointed out that night, but he did not return calls. So, that's great that he was going to hold his price, but I contacted him back in October, and reached out a week later, and never heard from him. Amazingly, he called on Friday. It's probably easier if you just have one person do the whole gig. The proposal that I had laid out previously did take into account future expansions and things like that. But at this point, I think it's better just to have someone else draw it up, and we go with what they recommend.
Including the front step? You'd rather have it all in one, rather than trying to, because that's, we're months and months, months out, if we're worried about an architect coming in.
Well, we have a competing issue where someone came in and didn't do quality work. And our recourse on that is now, we're going to spend money to prove that they didn't do quality work. If we at least have that drawn up in advance, we can go from there.
You're referring to the, the other roof next door?
Yes.
So, an architect would shield us from that, to some extent?
Well, my experience with architects is, they're long on ideas and short on accountability, but that's, I. But that's, I.
Even if we didn't include the steps with an architect, you're still faced with the same conundrum from the public that wants, or the historic district that wants a more authentic stairs. And I don't know whether, I'm not sure. I know, I can't make a decision whether I want to have the same stairs they had 100 years ago. I have no problem with these here, they just didn't crack, to be very honest with you. It's the caulking between them.
I just want, I just want these stairs made right.
Okay, so if we make these stairs right, we know it's going to last maybe five years.
No, 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 no. It lasted six or however many years because it wasn't done right.
The scaffolding, the scaffolding has been there at least three years.
Fine.
Not four.
This configuration of stairs was not done right. And I'm saying, all the material that's sitting there that we're, that we're walking on is all beautiful granite. It's what's underneath that isn't supporting it properly. And had that been done right, it should be in better shape at this point in time. And it should last longer.
So I think we might, we don't need an architect for the stairs. We need an engineer.
I will find a competent professional.
And if you have a licensed engineer, they come with a guarantee that there's recourse. We're not, we don't need an architect to tell us what they need to look like. We need an engineer to tell us how to build them. And if they're a certified engineer, you do have more recourse than you do with an architect. So I think we need to make sure we have our terms right. And then for the town hall, so there could be, you know, the town hall, it's probably a combination of both because of the mechanicals and all of that. And then an architect for redesigning some spaces. But having said that, to go to Chuck's point, they might be able to be separated if we get an engineer specifically for the stairs. But it's still getting an engineer. It's not, I don't know what we did last time. Was it an engineer that did it last time?
It was an architect who was an engineer. But I got a quote.
Okay, Phil. I think the direction is we want the stairs fixed as close to what exists as possible.
Can I request a formalized vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we have Phil.
Direct the public works director.
Yeah, that's a better word, better word. To have the front stairs engineered so that we can be rebuilt properly.
As is, like, looking like.
As close, as close.
Not like the 1933 picture, but as is, I mean, same concept, as is.
I'd like to add to that, sorry, when they do that, I'm of big agreement for that, that vote. Maybe we could add that possibly they would put on different railings if so required, versus the one out there that are going to rock, the metal ones, maybe some stainless steel, something kind of.
Yeah, I would guess if they replace the steps, we hope they redo the railings, yeah.
Second?
Yes, second. Pick whichever one you want, Susan.
Yeah.
I mean, if they had better verbiage, that's fine, but I just think we need to.
I just, I just need to make sure that I understand what the motion was, Chuck. And is the motion to direct the public works director to get an engineering design to fix the stairs? Or is the motion to get the design and to do the fix? I mean, is it step one, or is it step one and two?
Yeah, since, I guess, since we don't, Phil, then it gave us a price of $70,000, as I recall.
It was the back of the napkin estimate, but yes.
Yeah, back in the day. So we still don't have any idea what it's going to cost. So I would guess, I would guess the motion will be to get it engineered, to get a cost, and then, once we get the cost, make the decision on, I mean, if it's $150,000, then, you know, then we got to, again.
We might be prefacing it.
Yeah, we got to decide. But we need to, I think we need to find out what it's going to take to get it done. So I guess I would change the motion to be, to have it engineered.
To it.
And priced.
And priced.
And just as a point of clarification, there should be enough money in the ARPA funds to cover that.
Yes, yes, there is.
So that's where I'll take that from. The follow-on issue is going to be the funding for the actual construction. I do not know that there will be enough in the ARPA funds.
Right.
With the other priorities as instructed.
Right.
Correct.
Right. So it's for the, it's for the engineering and coming up with a price?
To replace and repair.
To fix what's there currently?
Yes.
Okay, so that it will last hopefully more than just a couple of years? Okay. All right, so, all right, I'm good with that.
Okay, Phil.
And those funds to be taken from the engineering, the cost to do this?
From ARPA.
From ARPA.
The Santa Claus fund.
Take a vote.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post say no. Ayes have it. You have a unanimous decision to go forward with that plan. Thank you. Thank you for many reasons.
The next thing is, do we want to take a motion to get the architect? Or get an architect and do the building? Are we ready for that? I mean, that's, we've got to.
I think we need to start sometime.
You'd be right. I think we should probably do that as well.
Well, we'd go out to bid for the architects.
No, no, I understand, yes.
So I would entertain a motion that we hire an architect through the bidding process to give us an overall picture of what we want to do here in town hall.
Would that be an RFP? Is that, but that would be the proper way to develop an RFP for an architect to give us options on the upgrade of the town hall?
Right. We'd have to be developing a bid spec, which is really the first step before we can release an RFP, so.
Okay. Is that the right motion?
But who would do that? I think it's to start the process to develop an RFP, or?
I would highly suggest that whomever is involved with this project, that they sit down with Graham, as he has recommended, because he, you know, we had the architect to build the fire station. Now, not to say that, you know, you still go by the low bidder, but he was, he and Kent Walker were the one that developed 90% of all that stuff. So he would really be the one, or even get and look at the RFP that he did, or we did for the fire station. Now, Glenn, it's a little different here because you're looking at HVAC, you know, electricals. But the architects find those people, and they come in and they look at it, and they all add it, add it up to it. So, I mean, Graham would be the.
Who would be sitting with Graham? Is it a member of us, the select board, or who's going to head that up? To be, to sit down and come up with the specs and figure out how we go forward? So we have to have somebody in charge of that.
Well, I would, yeah, I would guess, I mean, Graham would be one person. Phil, obviously, has been in and out of the building, you know, just recently with having the guys come in and look at all that stuff to be able to at least, as from his report even, you know, earmark what we want to, what we want to look at.
I would solicit some of the help of the people that work in this building.
Yeah, I was going to say Tammy.
Know what they need in this building. They might be helpful.
Should we be just a little working group to figure this out?
Yes.
And I would include Tammy in there, to be honest with you. Or Susan, I don't know. I don't know, Susan can add anything else to her plate at this point, but I think Tammy might be able to.
I can help with the actual RFP.
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to be involved, Susan, there's no question.
Well, I guess we need a motion to do it, and then we can figure out who's going to be on the committee to do it, I guess.
I'll make a motion to form a study group to determine the needs for the renovation to the town hall.
Well, we haven't voted on the actual.
I need a second.
Second, but we haven't, we haven't voted yet on the fact that we're going to hire an architect to do the work.
Brad, who needs to take one step at a time?
I did, yeah. We haven't done the first step.
All right, but I'm going to let Paula talk before you two talk anymore.
So you don't need an RFP for architect, because that's considered a consultant. You don't need bidding for architect. If you want to, you can, but you don't need it.
Phil?
And I like the working group. I think that somebody should talk to everybody in this town hall that works here to see what their needs are.
Right, right, I agree. Phil, give us some help here.
So one of the quotes I got from one of the architects included all of that, going around and doing assessment studies and need studies and everything like that. So the. You got to boil down what you want here. Do you want future expansion built into this? Or just to address the HVAC needs? I think the HVAC needs have been addressed. That's been taken care of. And there's already an engineering firm lined up to do the mechanical engineering for the load calculations and everything like that. I have not retained them yet because I wanted to see the results of this conversation. But if we bring an architect in, they will probably start that all over again, the work that I've already done, and include the people in the offices and do, you know, they'll tell you who needs to be there and everything like that to put all that together. So I guess you're asking for multiple things. There could be a guy who can just give you a turnkey answer on this and take care of everything to include the mechanical engineering and whatever else, put proposals in. I mean, what are you looking for?
I guess, I'll speak for myself. I'd like to see how the, this floor and the first floor can be redesigned to maximize use of the space. That, that's, that has to happen. And whether we take out walls or put some new ones in, or get rid of the stage, all of that has to come into play. The HVAC, if, what I hear you saying is, we don't need to do that because you already got it done. But doesn't that, if you rechange the interior, doesn't that impact the HVAC and where the splits are located? I mean.
So that would be part of the load calculations that they would do. And it was for all the individual offices. I don't think that footprint is going to change overall.
All right.
So it would provide, basically, these two offices would have their own setup, and each of the offices downstairs would have their own setup. With the intention being that in the future, when the backup system that we're leaving in place craps out on us, that just has to be replaced on its own. But that's going to add time onto this, and we're going to have a window this summer where it needs to be replaced. We can't do that in January, so.
From that perspective, then, it makes sense to fix the HVAC, take care of the oil tank in the front stairs this year. And then next, this time next year, put together a group to look at overall the overall building. Am I correct in that?
I mean, my whole proposal was based on these things being independent, modular things that can, are not going to be a detriment moving forward. So that's why the mini-split system will allow us to just do what we need to do in the future with the existing system. That will just be left in place as a backup.
See, I think from, I think others, like, putting their two senses in, in the past, and me personally, I'd like to see the architect do it all at once. Because what if, I'm just going to use me, I'm not saying this is happening. What if I say I need my office made a lot bigger? I need a meeting area. That one split unit might not, I'm just making a point, might not be big enough, or it might have to be moved, or. That's why if we have the architect do everything all at once, and then have a punch list, what needs to be done first? Obviously HVAC and all that stuff would probably need to be done first. But then they know, okay, we're going to be extending this office. We're changing this office to this way. Where, you know, that'll remediate a lot of the after problems that could happen if we were to just do it piecemeal.
I'm of two minds. I mean, I could go either way, honestly, because it's, I see the benefit in having a holistic approach and then. But we don't know what our future needs are going to be. We really don't. We can't sit here and speculate. In 10 years, you know, we're going to chop something up. And then how does that impact the mini-splits and the electrical? We don't know that, right? So if we were to rip this, if we keep the stage here, but in 10 years, we rip it out and we make that office space, how do we then, if we'd made a plan now, how does that accommodate for that, right? So I see the benefit of doing it plug-and-play, but then also having an overview of what we want to do.
It's not an easy answer. You know, we could probably get, we can get by with as-is in terms of space for another year without any designs, for sure. We get the heat fixed, which I think is the critical, the whole HVAC system and the front stairs, to be honest. When you get those two things fixed.
The electric, but what about these stairwells?
And the audio, there we go.
Right, and the stairwells, right? Is in the plan, have we addressed, like, the heat, the energy loss through these stairwells?
No.
We're working through that. But again, this is a limited amount of money, and there's a lot of very expensive ideas being batted around.
Understood, understood. So that's what I'm saying, you know, that to me, that kind of issue would be, you need to look at holistically, like, the whole energy consumption of the building.
Especially when the backup has no insulation.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. I mean, there's benefits to doing both, right? Like knocking off the things that are most important. But I think that's where it got us into some of the situations we are now. Because we're like, oh, winter's coming, and we have to, you know, so.
What's the motion on the floor, Susan? There is a motion on the floor, if I'm correct?
Hire an architect through the bidding process, and then we're deciding whether we need a bidding process, upgrades to the town hall.
Mr. Rusman, oh, no, okay.
Sit down, hold over specs.
Let's take that motion off the floor for a minute here. Hey, let's withdraw the motion. I'm sure the motioner and the second would agree with that.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, just, yeah, cross it out.
Maybe we should do some of the things that Phil has suggested, that we know approximately what the cost is now or in the near future. Once that stuff is done, as far as money goes, then maybe allocate. If we want to then have an architect look at the rest of the building for additional rooms, et cetera.
That sort of sounds like going back to where we were with this.
If it were me, and we didn't have financial constraints and 0.002% of the population screaming at the top of their lungs about something, I would get an architect in here to do a full building assessment and figure out a long-term plan for replacement. I would put the brakes on everything and have them assign priority to it. They can get ahold of engineers, they can get mechanical contractors in here, they can get all those things for you. It is going to be very expensive, but it'll give you a five-year plan to work through, to budget to, to do that. But that, at no point in this journey has anyone brought that up. It's just do it as cheaply as possible, get as much done as we can, and do this, and this, and this, and. The smart move is to get someone in here to plan this out for the long term.
Then that's what we're going to do. I think we should do that. Because we're going to throw good money after bad if we don't. And I think we're going to run it, especially with the configuration, I think it's going to create more problems. We have some nice pieces of architecture, any of that would be nice to preserve. And let's go, I mean, we got a floor that needs to be addressed. Yes, Mr. Baker?
Quick question. So Phil, is it my understanding that when you first started this presentation, you're going to put multiple mini-splits in the building, heat and AC, and then somewhere down the road, possibly, if need be, the existing system could or should be replaced for a backup unit?
What the, the ideal scenario would be that it'd go down to one furnace to service this upstairs area, and then just the hallway. And then the mini-splits would be the main, you know, you'd get heat when they need as a backup, but it would be reduced from what it is currently. And hopefully, the energy efficiency upgrades would play into that to make that more effective. But right now, we're just losing so much heat out the back that it's.
Funny.
So Ellie, so what we're saying is, we get an architect for the whole thing, except for, we already said we want to get an engineer for the town steps. So those are still separate, right? Like, an engineer.
I think you get someone to do it all.
To do it all, okay.
Take the full view of it.
I'd say all or nothing.
Okay.
Right. Because what if the, what if the architect says we need a ramp, a handicap accessible ramp? You're going to take that whole funding, it's going to change everything.
Exactly.
Am I correct in that? I mean, you're good, may not be just a simple ramp. It might come into the building, you're not, yeah, but yeah.
So the one that we already approved, then, would be negated? Because if we go with an overall, right? Because we said we would do an engineer just for the front steps. And then it would just be an engineer for the whole thing?
I want to hear from everybody, make sure that we're all in agreement on this. This is the best way to go forward. Or you want to do the stairs and then everything else? Peter?
I'm in favor of the engineer for the front steps. It's a totally different entity with concrete. We'll get those things figured out, let's get the stairs fixed, like we talked about.
Yeah. Yep.
And then we have the architect come in for the rest of the building. Because the amount of time it's going to take to do the whole project, it may be a year or two before you're looking at the stairs again out front. So I think we should actually, again, address the stairs...
Stay with the stairs.
And then an architect that could do work on the building project. That's my, my thought.
Okay. Glenn?
Yes, that was, that was my position, and it remains my position. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? And then there's no motion on the floor? And we proceed with the front stairs to be fixed, and then after that, to go on to an architect for the rest of the building.
Okay.
Thank you, Phil.
Don't go away. One more question. So, there's three items that, or some items that were suggested that you guys would do. Door downstairs in the server room, the new window, fatami downstairs, and there was a, oh, and the fascia work. I think those three were items that you thought you might be able to do.
We were looking at funding those through the capital improvements line.
My point is to get those approved, ask, to let you know that you can go ahead and do those, rather than, again, waiting. I don't think we need to wait six months for the architect to have that stuff put in.
No, no.
Do what ones?
The, the, Tammy wants another window.
Oh, that should all be the whole kit and caboodle.
And a new, another door in the server room for the, the heat issue. And then the fascia work. I'm just saying, those, those are the three that I had, unless I sent you a list of what I thought, that his guys would do.
The only thing with that, the only thing I, again, we might not have a fourth window down there, depending on, or third window, depending on what the architect is, the only thing that's a concern there is the server room. That, I think, needs to be addressed, because of, make sure, we don't want to overheat it, right? Am I, that should be a priority? What's, what's saying, Mr. Coombs?
So the concern there was the physical security of that room, i.e., a door in a public area that was unlocked a lot of the times. The overheating issue was because people stacked boxes in front of the vents on the door, and it couldn't properly...
Okay, so that's a different, right, that's easily fixed.
So one of the HVAC issues that was going to be addressed was a more industrial fan, rather than just your typical off-the-shelf bathroom fan, to actually pull air through there. It's, it's not an overheating issue in that room, as long as it's kept clear, and my guys are checking that regularly now. But it's a physical security issue. Again, the window in the town clerk's office and that work was going to be done, because it was anticipated we were going to have to shut down sides of the office, so this was the time to do that. I don't think that that needs to be, I mean, they're not priorities over the other items that are on that list. As far as the fascia goes, that's going to require someone to come and look at it, a historic preservation person.
Okay. So we're not going to do any of that stuff right now? Is that correct, or yes or no?
So we have a gentleman who's going to be retained to do the work on the Grace Daily Barn. I'm going to bring him up there and have him look at the fascia, get some ideas from him, and we'll see where we have to go with that. There was, there's work been done up there that was not properly done, and it bought us the 15 years that the Band-Aid they put on it did. Now we're at the point where it needs to be done properly. So as I'm digging into that more, it looks like it's a lot bigger project than it was.
And so I think the win, the extra window for the town clerk would be a requirement that we would give the architect, and say, you need to work this into whatever you're going to do.
And that would be all things like the server room?
Yeah.
If we're having someone look at the entire building from top to bottom, those would all be things that would be addressed.
Right, right, right. And the fascia, because it's outside, that, that wouldn't be changed from a, an architect for renovating the town hall, so that's a separate, that's a separate task, right?
Yes.
Right, okay, so that can, but the rest of it inside would wait until we got, okay. I'm just trying to get this all straight in my head.
I mean, you can, in my mind, you can sort of, you can sort of compartmentalize the interior space and the exterior as separate kinds of things.
In theory, the exterior's not going to change.
In theory.
In theory.
But, but, you know, just another point, and when considering the interior stuff, I mean, we have been talking about eventually, and someday we will have a town administrator, and that is going to change probably the configuration of how things are laid out.
Yep.
So it's all, all things that need to be thrown into the mix.
Thank you. Okay, item next.
So did we, did we vote on that for...
The stairs are the only thing we voted on.
Okay, so we're not voting on the renovation, the architect for renovation on the inside? Right?
Yeah, the only other thing that wasn't on the agenda under old business is the opening, making sure that the downstairs opens at 8:00 a.m. every day starting April 1st. I forgot to give that to you, Susan, on you. Correct. Okay, so that's, that's a go. Okay.
Well, yes, it's a go, but the fact is that those hours are going to remain all year.
From, that's right, yep. It starts, as of April 1st, the hours downstairs start at 8:00 instead of 9:00 a.m. Okay. New business, option agreement with Revision Energy.
Okay, that, that should be fairly simple. What happened was that we had an arrangement with Revision to have an option on the old landfill to start doing an assessment of its potential for holding a solar farm to produce electricity. The select board only had the authority to offer a one-year option. Revision really needed up to five years to potentially do the work they need to do to, for due diligence. We had a warrant article to give us that authority to, to provide a longer-term option, and that passed by wide margin, actually. And so we are, in your packet now is essentially the First Amendment to the agreement that we already had in place with Revision, extending the initial one-year to up to five years.
Okay.
Did I say that right, Susan?
Yes.
Okay.
So what, the, the option period was the part that was changed, right?
Yeah.
Because it says, we shall have the right to extend the option period for three additional one-year periods. So where's the five years coming into play? Because we had it for one year.
It's not, it doesn't have to be five years.
It was up to five.
The authorization was up to five years.
Got it, but this is, okay, got it.
Yeah. We're just looking for together three in this one here.
That was, yeah, amended by Revision for what they're going to need.
Okay.
So for purposes of getting this for, for discussion, Ellie?
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we authorize and sign, the First Amendment to the option to ground lease agreement with Revision Energy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
One question, oh, and it would have been for Paula, but have we received our first year option payment? Because it's $1,000 bucks a year that we're getting for this. I'm just curious if, I don't know if under the original agreement there was a payment schedule, I'm sure there was.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we got that first year, but she'll be able to tell you for sure. I remember getting a check, because she was like...
Okay, all right. And I realize that this is just an option, so all the detail. Paula, have we received the first year option agreement from Revision for the landfill? It would have been for $1,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
A couple months ago?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, great.
Thanks, Paula. Okay, next item, local...
Do you want, do you want, do we vote?
Sorry, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Oh, no? Ayes have it. Next item is a local match commitment letter, which, for the Main Street Bridge project, that has, has mitigation assistance. Do I have a motion? I don't know if you've got a copy of that, that was in the armory folder here.
Yes, it's the local, it's the, it's the local match commitment letter, and I think it was, I mean, we discussed it a little bit earlier, but...
Can I have a motion on it?
But I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the local match commitment letter for the Main Street Bridge project as presented in this letter dated 3/25/24.
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, one question.
The match, where is that match coming from?
Oh.
That was the only issue on there, because it was...
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yes, that's a good question.
Sorry, I have to change the motion, because even though we are authorized to take the money from that fund, it requires a public hearing. So I guess my motion would be then to, I read...
Taking it from the infrastructure fund.
Right, and I read this earlier from at home, and I forgot completely about it, so...
Thank you, thank you.
So rescinding my first motion, and making a motion that we hold a public hearing...
Next Monday.
Is that, Susan, do we need 10 clear days on that as a public hearing?
I would prefer to, some, some do, some don't.
I think we, I think we do public hearing under RSA 91A requires that, so...
We do it April...
It's not a public, it's a public hearing, so I think 10 clear days is what's required. So the following...
Yep, it is different.
Whatever the following, two weeks from now is...
Okay.
Will give us enough time to make that.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay, we already discussed the quarterly meetings at the Social Services Group, we've approved the county's payable policies, sale of town property 2024 policy was in our packets. And we're talking about property, we received one, a notification for 47 Newton Junction Road. The question is, are we, to reaffirm the policy, is that correct, Susan?
For the sale of town property?
Yes.
We had an inquiry about 47 Newton Junction Road, and so the question for you is if you want to entertain selling that. Several years ago, we created that policy, and it would be a once-a-year offering of any town land that the board chose to put out for sale. At that time, it was all the butters, because we were selling unbuildable lots.
And this is not.
And this is different, so...
Well, why don't we take, as individuals, go take a look at the property, make sure we know what we're talking about, and then add this for an item for discussion for next week's, next week's meeting.
Okay.
And that's 47 Newton Junction.
And I don't know if there's anything else in town, you know, for a while, there was a list in Great Pond Park, they wanted to kind of divest the town of, but I don't know that there's anything at this time, this may be the only one.
Well, let's take a look at this one here and see if, if it's something that we're interested in doing.
Ellie, I have one, something under new business before we go on.
Okay.
I forgot about it. So at our last fairgrounds study group meeting last Wednesday, we, we realized that we're ready for a public hearing on it. We need a little bit more time to get some more research done, but there's no need to have another study group meeting, I mean, essentially, so...
So you want to hold a public hearing on...
On if we move forward with using the fairgrounds as fairgrounds property, as opposed to leaving it...
As-is.
As-is, which is nothing.
Okay, what's your pleasure, ladies and gentlemen?
Uh, we're, I'm, I'm, it doesn't need to be for like another month or so, but I just want to get it on the agenda, so we can get it publicized, that there'll be a public hearing, so...
Okay, so...
Sometime in, what is this, mid-April-ish would be fine?
Mid-April?
Oh, no, what is this? No, we're at the end of March.
Where in the March?
Uh, like the beginning of May, mid-May, yeah.
Maybe the first meeting in May, something like that, yeah.
That would be fine.
Ellie, I just want, I just want to make a comment on my findings that I'm working on for that vehicle.
Oh, yes.
Should I do that now, or should I wait till the board visits down below?
You can do it now.
Okay, I was asked, my first meeting, actually, to take kind of charge with this inspector's vehicle, and I just want to let the board know what I found out. First of all, the vehicle is a 19, I'm sorry, 2012 Ford Explorer, currently only has about 76,000 miles on it. There is, there was a list forwarded to me of what it did need. I did ask the director of the Public Works Department if our mechanic in town here that does work at the garage was able to complete a few tasks. He affirmed to me that, at this time, he was possibly too busy to do any of these repairs. I did get a battery put in the vehicle. I did find out that our inspector Pedro has been paid $238. He's put on 356 miles, at 67 cents a mile in January and February of this year. I've also found out that the town has never had an inspector vehicle maintenance fee, even though we had an inspector's vehicle. November 28, 2022, the vehicle needed $322 worth of work. That was taken out of the town inspector's supply budget. Since then, the vehicle's been kind of put on mothballs. I was able to get the battery in, and I did drop it off down at AJ Auto. He's going to make up a detail list and exactly what it does need, and I think we should probably wait till we hear from him. But again, I don't think it's going to take a lot. I am waiting, currently, right now, it's, it's being held, as far as what needs to be done. So I'm waiting for that list. So that's what I did find out about that vehicle. Just to let you know where I'm working on it.
Can I ask why AJ Auto? Do we have...
They do all the work for the police department.
Okay.
So we have, we have a working relationship.
Yep.
I, we actually felt we could trust them, and they're right down here in Kingston, and he was able to bring it, said, drop it off, and I'll tell you what I find out.
Okay, great.
That's why I'm with him. I'm sorry, that's why I brought it up.
Nope, thank you for the...
Good. One thing that we talked about before the meeting started, I wanted to bring this back onto the table. The previous board, we had, we had authorized, and I purchased a tree to start a memorial for Joe Thompson, and the tree, like I said, was purchased, it's been planted, Phil planted it at the fire station, and we had talked about having a, a ground marker, granite marker, made up for it. And so I had, I had located a source for it online, about $300, including shipping. I had some text drawn up, I just want to make sure that this board is okay. For our next meeting, I can recirculate what I had done and free you to look at, but I just want to make sure we're all still on the same page with that.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so, so at the next meeting, I'll, I'll have materials for you.
Yeah, so that we can approve it, and you can order it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then let's go through some of these, all right, let's, let's approve the meeting minutes for March 18th.
I move the minutes from March 18th to 24, including executive session.
Okay.
Just, just the public ones.
Yep, just the public meeting.
Second.
Any amendments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ayes have it, meeting's adopted. We also have a special events request for acoustic music at the draft house, beginning May 27 through September 28.
They did this last year on a special events. You can see the old one.
Yeah.
They added more dates, they want every Saturday, I believe, so that's the decision I would think you'd need to make, but it's still acoustic, one person, I think, on the deck.
Yeah.
So he's outside?
Yes.
I would move the request, please.
In a second?
For discussion. For the sake of conversation, I'll second it.
All right. Discussion.
I, where I land on this is where I land on the, the entertain, outdoor entertainment for any restaurant business, and Saddle Up is the, is the one example that we've dealt with here on several occasions, and if this were a one, or maybe even a two-session thing, I would consider that special, where it's every weekend. I personally think this needs to be part of their site plan, and an amended site plan through the planning board, in my mind, is the right process. And coming to this board, as Saddle Up has done for multiple dates, is, is just asking this town to skirt the process that we have for, for activities out of business. That's, that's where I'm at.
Further discussion, Mr. Binkley? Further discussion, Mr. Banky.
I agree, and I think what this does is, as Glenn was saying, if there's a few special dates that will give us time to review the activity. I do know there's been complaints in the past on Kingston Lake. I'm hearing that echo across the lake, as in Saddle Up echoes across the water, so I know they've had some issues here in the past.
From the draft house?
Yes, absolutely, they can hear that over through Wildly Pointwood.
Okay.
And they can hear their music. So I just think, I'm definitely, I am a music person, I'm 100% in favor of it, but I think if you give them some limited dates to start, we can get some feedback, possibly from the people, just versus giving them an open line that's going to go until September. I think, again, I don't think this application was meant for this type of multiple dates.
Okay. And I'm in agreement with my colleagues, I think if they want it every weekend, then they need to go for a site plan review through the planning board. Susan, all right, let's take a mo.
So I, I'm in agreement with Glenn, I don't even think it should be entertained for one or two, because they're, they did this last year and we made an exception, so if they want to add music to their business, they need to change their site plan.
Then we need to defeat the motion. Let's take that off the table first, and then we can get advice on what we think they should do. All those in favor of approving the special event request, please say aye.
I'm going to disagree.
Approved.
The motion was to approve it.
I'm sorry.
So if you vote yes, you approve it, if you vote no, you don't. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
No? Those have it all the way across, any abstentions? No. So the application for a special permit for every Saturday has been denied, with a caveat that it needs to go to the planning board for site plan review.
Right, and that needs to be communicated back to them.
Yes.
I will talk to them, so if the site plan is going to take a while. They might want to come in and get one or two dates and that.
And that's fine, but.
Okay.
And they could do what they did last year, but it won't, this will be the last year that we'll approve special dates, if they really want to go every week.
I think last year was 10, 10, 10 times, right?
It was.
Was it that many?
It was, and then they increased it, I think they doubled it this year, so.
Well, yeah, this is every Saturday.
This is every, and last year it was 10, so.
So say six.
So we need to figure out, like, what constitutes a special event, right? Every weekend is not a special event, that's why we're saying site plan. So if they come back and say, well, here's five dates, is that still a special event? Or is it still, right?
I don't want to get into defining special event. I want to say, we'll give you, you know, if you could tell them unofficially, if they want to ask for four or five event dates, that's fine, but it's going to be the last time they get them.
Well, and I've got to tell you that there's no guarantee that that vote will pass either, because.
That is true.
We're not promising them anything.
Yep.
That's right. That's very true.
It would probably help them to show that they're in the site plan.
Because I have, because I have to tell you that if they came in with, say, two dates, and they also could show us an application to the planning board where they've got, they've got a meeting with them and they're ready, you know, they're moving forward with it, you know, I might be inclined to vote for one or two dates, but, I mean, if I don't see anything from them that indicates that they're going to move forward with an amended site plan, I'm not likely to support it.
Okay, that's fair enough.
So how long, what's, when they adjust the site plan, what do they have to do?
Well, the planning board can do a full site plan amendment, or they can do a modified amendment, which would be a lesser course.
So they'd have to.
But Glenn, they'd have to meet with Glenn Greenwood, and he would guide them through that process.
So they'd have to do a whole set of plans?
Not necessarily, not necessarily.
Wow.
They wouldn't have to do the plans because the fit, wait a minute, the physical location's not going to change.
I understand that, I'm just trying to figure out.
Things like, things like that can be done by a recorded affidavit, by changing the uses of the site, not necessarily the.
We're not looking to create a hardship for the draft house. That, I think that needs to be made clear.
Right.
But if they want to have it every weekend, it should be a relatively simple procedure to change the use, to expand on, to offer acoustic music on Saturdays.
Right, and the first date here that they're asking for is the end of May, we're at the end of March. If they get notice of this today, or soon, they have time to talk with our town planner, get a process in place, get on a planning board meeting agenda, and get their, get their stuff together, so that they should be ready for it. If they wait, though, until the end of May to do this, they're going to be in here asking for dates, and we're going to be back to this discussion again.
So if, I hate to drag it out, but my whole thing is, I think it's a restraint of trade, and I don't really think that, you know, if this guy has one guitar player in there and bringing in extra people and extra money, you know, for him as a business, unless, of course, if you had the first one and the police went there, then that's a different issue. So if the planning board says no, we're not going to allow it, for an example, is that, can he still come back in and ask for a special date from the selectmen to have a entertainment, or is it just gone forever?
Oh, no, he has recourse, they could, they could come back to us and ask again, not knowing, of course, not for certain what the outcome would be. They could also seek a variance through the zoning board of adjustment. I mean, that's another re.
They could appeal the administrative decision by the planning board.
Right.
Item next. Eligibility exemption.
There's a bunch of them because after the vote, there were some that I held that weren't eligible before that are now, so there's a few there. There didn't end up being eight, there ended up being five, but.
I don't have to read the names in public, right?
No, it's just, so you're aware, that's why, that's why there are so many.
Three, I'm going to make sure, there's five here, okay, there is, because there's a couple other items. One is a, one is not eligible because they haven't supplied all the data. There was a sixth one.
And I think that's a veterans, though.
And they don't have residency or documentation, so.
Right, but I think they were applying for veterans as well, so I think what you'd be approving is just a veterans credit, if I.
Oh, veterans only, yes, okay, that makes number six. And you also had a facilities use for the first congregational church, to use the planes at the bandstand, in the bandstand on May 2 for National Day of Prayer, which is open to the entire community.
Yeah, I meant to grab Graham on that one, but they, that's another thing they do. The last few years, they've done it, so.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve it?
Do we have sign off from the other departments?
Yes, just not Graham.
Yeah, we need Grahams, we have Phils and we have Joe.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve it contingent upon the fire chief signing off and being okay with it.
Okay, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Ayes have it, unanimous, okay. Couple more things? Yeah, thank you. One second. There was an abatement, we approved this abatement request, this needs a signature on it, was one of the ones, the assessment was adjusted at our last meeting. And I don't have anything else, I'm scared for sure. It's been a long day.
Are you talking about any other business?
Any other business to come before us? Yes, you go right ahead. We're not quite done yet. Oh, Adam, you have one thing? Go ahead. That's fine.
Time's up.
Done.
So I was updating the Facebook page this morning. Someone messaged us asking what the results of the recount were, and I could just put that on the page, but I just was curious if we wanted to establish, if people message, do I respond to those messages through the chat function? Do I ignore them? I don't know what the preference of the board is, so I figured I'd ask. I hadn't even considered it.
I don't, I don't think there's going to be a lot of messages, I think we should, yes, common courtesy, yes, absolutely, if someone messages, we can answer them. That's my opinion, because I don't think.
Well, we want Adam to answer them, it's the question, right?
I mean, I don't mind answering it, I just, I don't want to answer, I don't want to engage without permission, and it's a whole, just like, again, if it's something simple, the recount, recounts, nothing changed.
So that's actually a good question, I guess it would depend on the question if we want him to answer on behalf of us, right? So.
And I would guess that if it's a question that you're not sure of, and let's say it's something in finance or Tammy's office, you'd ask the question of them first and say, hey, I got this question, what do you think? If they say, oh, that answer's fine, or.
I mean, that's also, I can do that, I didn't know if it would just be, this isn't something I can answer, but here, you can get in touch with whichever department it is, I don't know, again, I can do whatever the board preferences, I just.
That'd be a good way to.
I don't know if we want to think about this, I leave it to you.
POC for the topic.
All right.
No. It's a good question.
It is a good question.
If you can answer the question, you know, easily, like you say, the recount, if you were concerned, you go down and say, Tammy, I got a question about the recount, is it okay to, you know, if you feel that, or she might, you might want to get the answer. In other words, the recount, there was no change, or there was a one vote change, or whatever it was.
So if it's something, but if it's something like, oh, can you explain these eight things to me, and it's all like Phil's stuff, maybe I just direct them to Phil?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to go over this three, there's three purchase orders you need to know about. One is from, is the amount of $61,640 from the Capital Reserve Building and Maintenance Fund for the Grace Daily House. And the other two are, one's $57,5760 for the renewal for programming for Paula, and the third is Fire Department, $9,813 for service for the yearly service for ESO Fire Incident Reporting Software. Just to let you all know what we're signing here. If there's no other business to come before us, meeting. Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought Adam was yours.
Just two quick things.
Yep.
One, I did have a chance, soon as I had my, I got my first meeting, the next day I went right out, and I went down and talked to a couple guys from the building department, because I'm totally a liaison to them, and I went down and spoke with Joel. So one of the feedbacks I need to have, I guess the town now has a citizens portal that goes through the town highway department, that if somebody wants something done, they put it through the portal, I believe it was a, I thought it was a purchase, the program, the computer program.
Yeah.
$10,000, and it's called a citizens portal. So what happens is, when they want, when they want to do a request, it goes through the portal. Well, what happens, from what I'm understanding, the departments, the town hall and the police department, if they want something done, they have to put in a request on the portal.
Yeah.
So, but there's quite a time delay from the request to a response. So I'm just trying to figure out about that portal, about to get something done maybe quicker for the department.
So, so Public Works has a draft policy in place, they, it'll be in front of everybody next week, I think. So it's part of, that particular, it's not for everybody, only the department heads got it, it's not for every employee. I think that's part of I Work, so that, that portal alone didn't cost $10,000. So, I mean, I don't want that, that's bad information. So they're going to have a policy in place that, I think they're going to outline when to call, as well as when everything needs to go through that facilities management request, everything, but there'll be instances where you can call.
But we haven't approved that particular piece of it, right?
We haven't approved what? The policy?
The portal.
No, you guys are already using it, everybody's already using it. The facility management piece, everybody has the link to request, we have light bulbs out, we need them replaced, that's what he's talking about.
I guess the question is, is the response time has not been good.
Understood, that, and that's, so. That, that just has to be.
It should be 24 hours or 48 hours.
Right, and that should be part of the policy on, if it's a routine thing, you know, someone will get back to you, if it's an emergency or whatever. I mean, I'm a super draft, so I don't know.
Okay, so this is just feedback I received.
Yeah, yeah.
And another thing I want to talk to when Paul was in the audience, I think she's been working on this pay matrix with department heads.
Yep.
And I know we've talked about this, and this is probably, we put it on a future agenda that we should talk about this, but as a liaison, I really believe that we should have a department head on the building department, and we don't have one. And, and I think, I think unfortunately, I don't want to say there's no direction, but there's no direction. The way I get it down there on that department, we should have a department head to the building department, somebody in that building department that kind of has to make sure everything gets done. Does that make, does that make sense?
That's Pedro.
Yep, well.
He's not technically.
He's not technically the department head.
He's not, he's not a supervisor, his thing is to coordinate, which is hamstrings them.
Yeah, and it's just, I'm just kind of curious that, so we have a couple full-time people that work down there, and then we have some part-time people down there. And unfortunately, sometimes, as he addressed today, that he needs to get a certain permit signed or done, he requires, I need the electrical inspector, the plumbing inspector, or the health officer or something, so who does he report to to say, okay, can you talk to this person and get it done? There's no really buddy in that department that the department head. All I'm saying is that my very short interactive period, being down there and sitting there, it seems to be a confusion of getting things done, and I believe, one, here's a perfect example, when these contractors come in to pull a permit, the second they're there, they need to be told, hey, listen, this is a house permit, it's going to take X amount of dollars, X amount of time to get the permit signed, because I need to have all these signatures on this, if you get a permit. They come in the next day and they want. Now, a person with experience in this town and other towns, a lot of the time you go there, fill out the permit, they stamp it and they hand it to you, there's no review process. But here, he's trying to get a review process, and the people come back angry and bitter, well, they, they need to understand that you can come pull a permit, but there's a lead time. Well, there's nobody really to make that decision down there.
Which.
That's all I'm saying, possibly in that department, I think we, as more people come in and get involved in the town, they want to do things, we need to have.
Which I thought in the past, I'm just using Pedro as his name, but he was that person, not him necessarily, but that, the person in his position was that person that made the decisions.
I don't think they ever had the authority to direct the other inspectors.
I think that, that's something you guys should.
We need to put that on the agenda.
We need to do that.
We need to get that squared away, it is a problem.
Because he is trying to implement all these things, and I think he's doing a fantastic job at it, but he has, he hasn't been given the authority, and if he hasn't, then it's up to you.
Well, that's, I'm just bringing to the board that we should, we need to talk about the building department.
We, we have built into Pedro's hiring a six-month, he's on a six-month probation act, and he'll have a review at the six-month mark, and maybe that would be the time to kind of discuss this and set the process.
He's been with us three months now, right?
Since January.
January, February, he's been here three months.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think we need to wait three more months to discuss what we want to do down there, unless you're thinking that.
Don't have to.
It'll take another month anyways.
I understand the review you're looking at, I mean, if he was doing a terrible job, you know.
If the department head, the expectation there would be a promotion or.
No, we're not, we're still on.
We're still on. There would be an expectation that there's a raise and all of that, so I think there's a lot more than just, now you're the supervisor, and now you're the department head. Yeah, and I don't think there's an expectation for a raise, per se, because. Sure, there, if you're promoted. He has been told that he's in charge, he, he's the one creating all these rules, and he's the one heading these department meetings with the rest of the.
Inspector.
So he's already doing it, he just doesn't have the official authority to do it.
And we need to make that happen.
And that's what you guys have to do.
Right.
He's already running the department, and, and the inspectors know that he doesn't have the authority, and some may take advantage of that.
That's correct. So Susan, if you add that to our agenda, that'd be great.
Am I not right, Susan? Is that how, like?
Yeah.
How it's been.
He can't tell one of the other inspectors to do something.
Yeah.